I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Wednesday, August 21st, 2024. This is the State Board of Education Monthly Meeting. And we will start with a roll call. Suzanne, if you're ready.
Yes. Mohamed Joe.
Present.
Gray Baron.
Okay.
Kim Gleason.
I'm here.
Caleb Greenwood.
Here.
Tammy Colby.
Present.
Lyle Jepson.
Here.
Tom Lovett. Jenna O'Barrow.
Here.
Rich Werner.
Here.
Secretary Saunders.
Here.
And Chair Samuelson.
Here, thank you. All right, are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. This is an exciting part of our meeting. We have our new student member, Caleb Greenwood. He is our junior non-voting member this year because Gray is with us now as a voting member. But before we get started, I'm going to deliver the oath of allegiance and affirmation of office to you. So I'm going to read something and then you just have to agree if you agree. So, "Do you, Caleb Greenwood, solemnly affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution or government thereof under the pains and penalties of perjury?"
I do.
All right, and now for the affirmation of office. Do you, Caleb Greenwood, solemnly affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of member of the State Board of Education and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability according to the law under pains and penalties of perjury?
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
So, we're going slightly out of order because I thought we're going to do the student report next, just so that we can officially welcome Caleb. Caleb is a junior at Lake Region Union High School, and you are from Troy.
Yep.
But if you want to just sort of open it up, let people know anything about you, your interests in school, outside of school, and then Gray will, and we can also, if you want to fill us in on what you've done this summer.
Sure. So, as you said, I'm from Troy, even though I go to Lake Region. So I'm a school choice student, and I was lucky enough to go to Lake Region. I was actually introduced to this position by my history teacher, and I'm the first student member from Lake Region. So I'm excited and honored to do that. Yeah.
Did you do anything fun this summer?
In a couple of days, I'll be going to the Basin with a couple of friends, just exploring. So I'm looking forward to that, as a little hurrah as a last end of summer.
When does school start?
27th for me.
All right. Any comments or questions for Caleb?
What did your history teacher tell you about it, or how they know about it?
So, I'm not sure how she knew about it, but she had posted on our Google Classroom stream, like, "This is a cool opportunity if anyone wants to look into it, try it," anything like that. So I had looked into it and whatever, and then she helped me through the application process and just helped me through the whole process entirely, to be honest.
That's cool.
Kim, let's say welcome and thank you for jumping into the process, and thank you for your participation and engagement in the first half of our day. Hit the ground running, so grateful to invite your voice to the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Gray, I'll turn it over to you. You look like you've spent some time outside this summer.
Yeah, I have. Well, most of my sunburn, most of my face, and yeah, lots of sunburn. It was just from this past week because I was in Florida Keys, and I got back at 3:00 this morning. So I feel really tired today, and I keep yawning, and that's why. So I'll apologize for that one now.
Don't worry.
I don't have anything to report about schools because I haven't been in school, but I did, I've already mentioned this to lots of board members. One thing I did was go to the Boys State Program as one of the four people from Virgin's, and that was a really cool opportunity for me. For those of you who don't know about it, it's about 50 kids. It's for people after their junior year, rising into senior year. There's also a Girls State Program that's similar, and it's all mock government. So, like, of the 50 of us, we divided into three towns, and where, you know, we form all various town positions. So we have, like, I was on the school board in the town, but we have a town problem that it's supposed to resemble like a town of Vermont, and it does. So it's some basic things, like, it says in the town problem that our road grader is broken. So we could buy a new one, or rent it, or figure out a way with another town to share our road grader. You know, some things are basic. And then throughout the week, we go through our meetings, we have to warn all of our meetings, we have to vote on everything, we have to create a full financial report and everything, and a budget, and make sure everything works out. And it's all a competition. You compete for model town. But it's like, I thought it was cool because it's very interactive to Vermont. So it was things like, you know, the school, for instance, you know, was not at full capacity, and neither were the schools around us. So we chose to merge school districts and merge school buildings and stuff like that. Or for our town, the workforce is starting to dwindle because people keep, after they're graduating, they were going to other towns. So we had a furniture company in our town that we had to figure out how to employ and how to get people involved and coming to our town. It was stuff like that. So it was a really cool opportunity. And I talked to other people who have done it, just because it really gives people, I mean, for me, I was already interested in politics, but at least a light to look at local politics and what they can do in their town, you know, because one of my close friends did it the year before me, and he is not interested in politics like I am, but his takeaway was just like, well, now I'll know to try to be the town clerk wherever I end up living, which is not a thought that a lot of people have. So it's nice that there are more people that want to be town clerks because of that program. And in Vermont, it's not particularly well advertised. I don't know if it's all a thing at Lake Region, because some schools, I'll talk to like people at CVU, and they'll be like, "Never heard of it, they don't do anything." So it's just kind of, it's school for school, which is too bad. And pre-COVID, it was more like 200 kids, so the numbers have really gone down. And adding on to that, later in the summer, every state has a Boys State and Girls State Program, and the top two for each go to Boys Nation and Girls Nation, which is what I did. And that's a week in DC with 100 people, two senators from each state. And so I got to interact with lots of student leaders from all over the place and see what they were doing. And lots of them are very passionate in education, so I got to speak to lots of people that were on their state boards of education for states that have that. I know I talked to people in Illinois, students who are on their state board of education, and just things that they did, and how they interacted, and whether or not they're voting members, or all of this stuff. So that was a really cool experience. But certainly, I would like, it's all sponsored by the American Legion. I'd love if Boys State was more popular, really, just than Vermont, because lots of programs have hundreds of kids from their state. And it's too bad that Vermont's not as robust with that program, because I think it's very helpful for Vermont's students. So, yeah.
Well, it's nice that you're able to share your experiences, and of course, members of the public can hear about it, and hopefully you could be a resource for people who want to know more about it.
That's true.
When does Virgin's go back to school?
It's a great question. I've been away for a while. Today's date is the 21st, and it's a Wednesday. We start next Monday, so whatever date it is, 26th?
Yes.
Yes, on the 26th.
All right. Any comments or questions for Gray? All right. Well, Caleb, this is your first student report, but this is always kind of a fun part for us because, you know, many of us still have kids in school, but we are not in school, and it's a really nice way to sort of connect and ground the work that we're doing. So we really love hearing, you know, sort of the day-to-day or, you know, week-to-week, month-to-month aspects of, you know, what you're doing in school, and as you go through finals, or, you know, thinking about your next steps when you graduate, it's all wonderful for us to hear about. So, thank you both. All right. That brings us to public to be heard. I don't know if we have any members of the public who are with us on the phone, or?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. As we often do, I will keep this item open as we move on to next things, and if anyone pops on, you can just let me know.
I will.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to approve our draft meeting minutes from June 12th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Rich. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from June 12th, 2024, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any extensions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, board announcements? I've got a couple. Does anyone else have any? Jenna?
I just have a little one. I did go to the graduation ceremony for Burlington High School, and it was held at UVM, and it was a pretty amazing testament to the resilience of the students and the faculty, which was through many student speakers and faculty speakers to hear what their past experience was for four years, from going remote, from being, starting remote to coming back and then having your school closed, and then being remote, and then being relocated once, and then relocated into the mall. And what was it like to go to high school in a mall, right? And I think that it would be amazing to study what's worked under extreme adverse condition, why students were successful, and what teaching may, you know, what worked. And they also told the tale of the number of administrators in four years. So it certainly wasn't the leadership that kept everybody afloat there. So I think it's worth a huge acknowledgement to the faculty, staff, and students' resiliency at Burlington High School. It's pretty amazing, especially when we're on the heels of a new school year, and we have schools right now who can't go back to their school, and the stress that that creates on teachers and on students. So I just wanted to raise the awareness.
Very good point. That'd be a good case study.
And being sensitive to what the needs might be for those teachers and students.
I'm proud of Jean Bertheum, one of our, in Whiskiwe, we say core principals, because we have one for middle school and one for the high school, but they honestly speak and work really well together. So I'm mentioning this to say Jean Bertheum was nominated the Vermont High School of the Year at the VPA Conference, which happened in Killington very recently, and we all were, my leadership team was there as conference attendee, and then we had our own retreat to get ready for the, this week, actually. So I just wanted to announce, I'm proud of Jean Bertheum, and I wanted to let you know he's been entitled the Vermont High School of the Year.
That's wonderful.
That's wonderful. Well deserved.
All right, well, I have two announcements. One is, and this is in your agenda packet, the press release that was created, well, sent out by the Agency of Education, just announcing, as we know, we hoped, there are updates to Rule Series 2000, which are the education quality standards, as well as Rule Series 2200, the independent school program approvals. Were both approved by ELCAR, which is the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rulemaking. So Kim, Tammy, and I, along with our attorney, appeared before ELCAR on June 13th, I believe, and we all went in person and entertained questions for a while, and, you know, then got to the vote. So those rules have now been finalized, they're in effect. Well, so EQS is going to go into effect July 1st, 2025. For 2200, those rules became effective July 1st, 2024, with the exceptions of subsection that relates to instructional strategies and the subsection that relates to curriculum content. So those rules are out there, and I believe the agency is offering guidance and support to schools so that they are able to come into compliance. Did you want to add anything to that, or?
No, we can, I can at the next meeting, though, share the timeline, but absolutely we are writing a timeline for that technical support implementation.
Great, thank you. And then my second update involves the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont. So this is a commission that was formed by the General Assembly as part of the Yield Bill, and there are, I have the names of the people who are on it. I'm on it, as the Chair of the State Board of Ed. In addition to that, Megan Roy, who's the Chair of the Commission, as, she serves on it in the capacity as the Census-Based Funding Advisory Group. She is also the facilitator for the Steering Group. Peter Conlin, who's a representative of Addison 2, he is both on the Commission and the Steering Group. Senator Ann Cummings, also on the Commission and the Steering Group. Interim Secretary Saunders is also Commission and the Steering Group. Tax Commissioner Bolio is on both as well, and I am. And Nicole Mace from Vermont School Boards Association is also serving on both the Commission and the Steering Group. And then the Commission is rounded out by Jeff Francis from the Vermont Principals Association, Michael Lichlider from the Vermont Superintendent's Association, Jeff Fannin from Vermont National Education Association, Elizabeth Jennings from the Vermont Association of School Business Officials, John Castle from Vermont Rural Education Collaborative, and Oliver Olson for Vermont Independent Schools Association. So the Commission has met once, and the next meeting will be Monday, the 26th, from 9:00 to 12:00. The Steering Group has met a couple of times, and the first big deadline that the Commission is facing is we need to have a work plan by September 15th. So that is something that we've been working on. And then at our last Steering Group Committee, we formed the Education Finance Subcommittee. And if people want to know, I can tell you who's on that as well. And I think at our next meeting, we are looking at the following buckets of work. One is communication and engagement, the next is education delivery systems, the third is the education finance, and then the fourth is government resources and administration. That final group, the government resources and administration, includes considering the structure of the agency and whether changes need to be made, both with regard to the agency and with the State Board of Education. I had represented at the Steering Group that we have our Rules and Responsibilities Committee that had been kind of dormant for a while, but we are bringing that back together, and the plan is to work with the agency to see if we can really kind of handle that subcategory of work, you know, between the agency and the board, and then go back to the Commission with a recommendation. So I will pause there if there are questions.
You said that you could share with us who's on the Ed Finance?
Yes, so I wrote that down. Wait a minute. Okay. Okay, so on the Education Finance Subcommittee, interim Secretary Saunders, or designee, Tax Commissioner Bolio, or designee, Senator Ann Cummings, Michael Lichlider, Elizabeth Jennings, Nicole Mace, and then the only person who's not on the Commission that was appointed to that committee is Representative Emily Kornheiser.
Is the deadline for your candidate report?
There are a few deadlines. So the work plan deadline of September 15th is sort of the first big deadline that needs to be buttoned up. We have, by December 15th of this year, a deadline of coming up with preliminary recommendations for the General Assembly to consider during the upcoming legislative session, and then we will continue on. There's a lot of public engagement that's being planned, so there are requirements that Commission meetings be held in each county within the state, sort of on a rotating basis. So Maureen and Suzanne are working on that. But there will be a lot of public engagement opportunities, in addition to public comment at the beginning of every meeting. But then the final deadline that the Commission is looking at is December 15th of 2025, for a formal report to be written and submitted to the General Assembly. So it is an ambitious, bold initiative, but I think what I can say, and I don't know if you want to jump in, a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of commitment to getting the work done, and recognition that this is important work that needs to happen.
The only thing I would add is there's another deliverable on December 15th of 2024, which is preliminary findings and recommendations, including short-term cost containment considerations for the 2025 legislative session.
I want to thank Jennifer for jumping in and being on all these committees, and as a part of lunch, I was looking at these things up here, and I'm thinking, how much time do we all have to do things and have full-time jobs at the same time? So as the committee comes together, that we talk about this stuff, I think we need to be cognizant of how do we make it real for the people that are actually doing the work? And the role of Chair of this board is, it doesn't seem to get smaller.
So I wonder around the same thing, and I know, like, we voted that Jenna, like, that you're going to be the person that talks a bit, but if you're representing the board, like, is it leadership or representation? And if it's, like, representative of the board, how does the board have discussions that inform input maybe into the Commission?
Good question.
Because without that, then you're actually acting as Jennifer, yourself, in that capacity as the board chair, without input from the board.
Well, and I mean, it's not unlike when I get called to speak before Senate Ed or House Ed. And, you know, all I can say is, you know, to try to be very clear, you know, I have my State Board of Ed hat on, or now you're asking me a question, I can't give you an answer on behalf of the State Board of Ed. I can tell you what I personally think, but I'm going to be really clear that I'm taking, you know, State Board of Ed hat off and, you know, putting on personal hat. And I, I've been, I mean, I'm viewing this through the lens of not what my personal belief system is, it's what the State Board of Ed does, and we are a neutral body, and I've been really consistent about that. Like, there is not room in, you know, my role to step outside of this neutral position that the board is in. So all I can say is I try my best, and I will, you know, do reports and updates, you know, every month when we meet, so.
There have been a lot of conversations around how we create a feedback loop between the Commission and other relevant and aligned working groups, such as the School Construction Aid Working Group. And so there's been some thought around maybe having a standing meeting, so that might be something that the board considers, that it'd be a standing item for us to provide an update on the Commission and get feedback from the State Board's perspective.
And I guess, if I can, I'm thinking about maybe, I might have thought that just leaning into Tammy's expertise and free access to that expertise in this arena might have made sense in terms of designee and representation. So to also Lyle's comment, the full breadth of the work could potentially be shared, or bringing at least Tammy's expertise and the voice to the Ed Finance work. So I'm just wondering if that is a consideration? Should it be a consideration, giving all the balls you're juggling? And I echo, I agree with Jenna, period. Like, I'd like a standing update to help inform the work.
Yeah, and so the selection of people who are on the Ed Finance Committee, part of it happened in an open meeting when we were talking about members who were on the Commission, but then, actually at my suggestion, we went into executive session to discuss people who were not members of the Commission, because it did not feel appropriate to me to be discussing people's names who may or may not end up on the Committee. And obviously, I'm not allowed to share what we discussed in the executive session, but I can tell you that there were several names of people who were not on the Committee that were discussed, and the ultimate decision was, you know, Representative Kornheiser was the only person not on the Commission who was asked to join the Committee for Ed Finance.
And I guess even though backing up to State Board of Ed representation and leaning into expertise that we have on our board, with all due respect, to do that rather than having you do that, because that would be a consideration and would maybe balance out more the extent of the responsibilities you're currently carrying. So, and in the example that's similar to when you're called to testify, I would, I'll put a plug and I'll say it at the end as well, that we, by December, think about what we anticipate coming up in the Legislature and have a full-throated conversation with the State Board of Ed, so when you go, you're not going blindly, that we, what we can anticipate, we might help inform. So those are the two things. I don't know if there was a consideration for somebody else to represent us who maybe had the depth and breadth of experience and the decision process to do that yourself.
That's a good question. I mean, I was listed in the Act as the Chair of the State Board, or designee, and I ultimately decided that I was the Chair and I was going to accept the position.
I think what I hope Jennifer hears is, what you're saying, Kim, is that it's a big job that you're doing, and if you need help doing that somehow, don't feel uncomfortable asking, so, because.
Yeah, and I think, too, I mean, one of the things that by design, you know, sort of reconstituting the Roles and Responsibilities Committee is to allow us to have feedback loops, so that we can be working as a board on Roles and Responsibilities, and then that feeds into the work of the Commission. And obviously, I don't operate in a vacuum, and so there are plenty of times when it would be appropriate for me to, you know, inform myself on a particular issue. And so, I'll, you know, I'm open to anybody, so feel free to reach out to me.
I was just going to say, on the Roles and Responsibilities piece, I really hope that we won't lose track of what it says in statute. I know we are always constrained by statute, but we are not doing what statute says we're supposed to be doing on several fronts, and I think that that is both our responsibility and our obligation, and not all of it is dated, much of it is not, as a matter of fact, and has been updated. So there are expectations, and we've been in a reactive mode for years, and I think that we really owe it to our responsibilities not to say, oh, we're just going to wait. I think we have to frame it around what it currently says in statute, whether or not we're doing it. And there are very specific things that it currently says that we aren't doing, so before it's negotiated separately and then brought, I hope we'll have a full-throated conversation about that here as a board. Thank you.
Thanks. I know that we've got a couple of people waiting for public comment, which I had said we would circle back to, but before I go to the public comment, are there any other board announcements? I want to make sure I'm not cutting anyone off. All right. So we're going to go back to public comment. If there are members of the public who wish to be heard, if you could raise your hand. On the Teams platform, it's just the little hand icon, just so I know how many people we have. It looks like those are the Teacher of the Year people. Oh, okay. Once I looked, it's all Teacher of the Year. Okay, so we don't have public comment?
Right.
Okay, no worries. All right, let me just make sure. I haven't lost my place yet.
Interims, I'm ready to use more.
Okay, yes, thank you. So I'm wondering if we, yep.
Do we like to shift that, since the teachers are here?
Yep. Yeah, if you don't mind waiting. Okay, we're going to pop ahead to Agenda Item G, which is the Teacher of the Year presentation. So I believe we have Andrew Prouton, who's the Agency Assistant Director of Education Quality, to introduce our three candidates this year. But I'll just preface this by saying this is one of our highlights, and I'm just pulling this from the agency website, that the mission of the Vermont Teacher of the Year Program is to promote the teaching profession, excuse me, to promote the teaching profession and recognize educators who are modeling exemplary teaching practice in Vermont schools. The Vermont Teacher of the Year is an outstanding teacher who represents the thousands of excellent educators in our state, demonstrating leadership to peers by defining quality and rigor and support by sharing collaborative professional knowledge. The Vermont Teacher of the Year serves as an advocate for the teaching profession, education, and students. So I want to welcome our three finalists and thank them for coming today and taking time out of their schedules to be with us and to share how their teaching platform reflects Vermont's educational priorities. Before we get started.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do we, does everybody have their scoring sheets ready?
I'll see Dan, Dana, just want to certainly congratulate our Teachers of the Year, this is a very exciting part of the agenda, so I will, in order to be, got to be our.
Oh, Katie, I'm sorry.
And she'll provide a little bit of background and an opening before we get started. So, thank you, Katie. We're just distributing the sheets right now. So give us one minute.
Could I have, I have two more. For each.
I'm good.
It's a small font.
All right. I think we're ready.
All righty. So hello, everyone. My name is Katie Gallardo. I'm in here for Andrew today, who's currently on paternity leave. I have been assisting with the Teacher of the Year process. And I'm sure you hear it all the time, but we had a very, it was a hard selection this year. There were a lot of great candidates. We had 28 folks that were nominated this year. And out of those 28 nominations, we received 14 applications. And we ended up having four interviews. And part of the grading rubric to get the 14 applicants down to four interviews came down to our prior Teachers of the Year. We've had some previous toyies generously volunteer their time. I can see Susan's on the call to review and grade the different applications and rubrics for the Teacher of the Year. So we do have three people today. We have Jeremy, Caitlin, and Sonia. I emailed them earlier letting them know, you know, they have five minutes to speak. And I can be the person that tracks that. Once I point to Jeremy and say, you're good to go, I'll start timer on my end. And I'll try to be very unobtrusive, but just maybe, you know, one minute left, 30 seconds left is, you know, that's super hard and fast. But I think the other thing I would say is that, as Suzanne said earlier, when you finish your rubrics, if you want to email them to me directly, I can put my email in the chat. And then I will collect all of those materials along with all the other application materials and send them along to Zoe's for the final review. So if that works for everyone.
If I may, Suzanne has offered to, many of us have hard copies. Suzanne Sprague is here and she's offered to collect our hard copies and provide them to you.
I'll do that.
Oh, awesome. Perfect. Yeah, that works, that works great. Yeah, no, that is fine. Okay. All righty. So I know the first one we have on the docket is Jeremy. And Jeremy is from Edmunds Middle School. So I would say, Jeremy, feel free to take it away. I'll give you like a 15-second head start and then I'll start the timer on my end.
Okay, hi, everyone. Thanks so much. I'm completely honored by this. And working in Vermont is fantastic. And thanks for all the work that you do. All right. Standing for you today as candidate for the Vermont Teacher of the Year, profound honor. My journey here has been shaped by personal experiences and a deep commitment to transforming education for every student. Traditional education didn't work for me as a kid. I hid, I survived, and navigated through a household full of deeply impacted by poverty, homelessness, and trauma. Like many current and former students, I faced systemic barriers that prevented me from realizing my true potential. However, college was different. I became hungry for something more and discovered the transformative power of education when it serves a greater purpose. And I've since realized that individual efforts by educators are not enough to topple systemic barriers that continue to limit the potentials of our students. When we cannot address these systemic issues until we stop telling them what we think is best and we start listening. Our role as educators is not just to teach, it is to create change. When we partner with students, colleagues, and communities, we become the architects of a football president and the builders of an enlightened and just future. Our schools have evolved into more than just places of academics. They're the center of life, a place of care and empathy and social responsibility. And as a result, the educators are now caregivers, teachers, mentors, advocates. This expanded role is an incredible privilege and is also an opportunity to positively impact the communities we serve like never before. Luckily, our students have heightened awareness of global issues, keen sense of justice, and a deep desire to make a difference. They're not just future leaders, they're leaders now. My main work with students then is to support and most importantly, step back and let them lead. I simply provide them with the tools to harness their inner power to become agents of change in the present. This change-based work lies at the intersection of U V M, culturally responsive teaching, personalization, and trauma-informed education. The educational pillar is advancing through Vermont's flexible pathways initiatives and critical race and ethnic studies platforms. My classroom motto, "Nothing about us, without us, or for us," underscores the importance of community voice and partnership in everything we do. Together, we have engaged in personalized projects based on student-led data collection and analysis to identify and redress systemic inequities in partnership with organizations such as U V M, the Berlin School District Leadership, and various community justice organizations. For example, last year, a group of students identified and addressed inequitable grading practices that disproportionately affected English learners, students with disabilities, and lower economic status. After sharing their findings with teachers and school leadership, they used peer review assessment techniques to advocate for more equitable assessment, which is going to be implemented this year. A second group of students discovered the staff of the global majority in our district how their ideas were undervalued. And they teamed with West Ed, a culturally responsive and sustaining educational foundation, to compile and share data and present their findings and recommendations to the school board, detailing the changes needed to create a more inclusive environment for our teachers. Another group of students learned that Yale teachers, or teamed with Yale teachers and then conducted a listening tour to better understand the cultural backgrounds of new American students and how our school can better promote inclusivity and understanding, which has since become a central focus of our advisory plan. Other groups addressed issues like hunger and its connection with academics, behavior, and attendance. And another, in partnership with Outright Vermont, are working on a more inclusive curriculum that is both anti-racist and queer-centered. Additionally, over the past few years, together, we have written grants to fund period products, worked with queer identity education, developed anti-racist teaching tools, petitioned school boards to raise a Black Lives Matter flag, and delivered workshops on these topics and others to educators and students across the country. This work is so meaningful that many students continue long after they leave the middle school. This work, however, doesn't stop with the students. For change-based work.
One minute.
Hold. Our educational policymakers must invest in partnerships with teachers. Teachers like their students are more connected and driven than ever. They need the freedom to trust and transform our educational system from a barrier for our most marginalized students into a bridge that links a purpose, exploration, empowerment, and joy. We stand at a crossroads in education where we can choose to retreat into the familiarity of the past or confront the challenges of today head-on. To do this, we as adults in education must listen to the needs and passions of our students, adapt our practices, and challenge the systems that constrain us. Like the work that I've done in partnership with my students, we can make our classrooms places that are toward justice. As Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." Let us rise to the challenge, embrace the power of our students and educators, and create schools that work to build a brighter future for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, I won't.
Let's see. The next up on our list would be Caitlin. And Caitlin is coming from Winuski High School. So Caitlin, I'll do the same thing and I'll give you an extra minute or 30 seconds because I can tell Jeremy's finishing up. So I'll do the same thing for you if I could tell you're nearing the end. So give it a go.
Before you start the timer, Jeremy, was there weird feedback when you were talking? And I'm wondering if respectfully, maybe the main room should be muted? There's just some funny feedback.
Yeah, I noticed some of that too, Caitlin. It wasn't, it wasn't just. I could still, I could understand every single word you said, but yeah, just slightly, the murmurings.
You can try it again this time. You can get started whenever.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, everyone. When I started teaching at 22, I could not believe my luck. How did I get a job that was so flexual and yet so creative? A job where I can take the greatest issues of our time and distill it into courses, units, and lessons? How did I get the best job in the world, full of hope, joy, and inspiration? The Teacher of the Year Program was founded to recognize teachers as nurturers of the American dream. As a history and English teacher and a literacy specialist, nurturing the American dream is central to my work. When people outside of our state think of Vermont, one image may come to their mind. However, my classroom is much more diverse. In Winuski, I teach both students whose families have been here for generations and generations, as well as families who are new Americans, from Congo, Somalia, Bhutan, and Myanmar. My classroom represents the joyous hope of the American dream for both old and new Vermonters. And yet, it is not easy. Our kids live in complex times, bombarded with headlines about mass violence, both in schools, in our community, and in our world. Headlines reminding them that the world is hotter than it ever has been, telling them that in some states, their teacher cannot show them certain books. It is my job to help students develop criticality, to make sense of this world, navigate this world, and ultimately create a better, more just, more inclusive world. What is the American dream if not creating spaces for everyone to succeed? When the three Palestinian students were shot on a Saturday down the street from our school, wearing the same kafias that many of my students wear, I knew that Monday morning would be different. Creating a space for students to bring their full identities, including their worries, their fears, their questions, is the work. We cannot foster the American dream if we cannot create spaces for our students to be. Through these conversations, I learned that our students in Hijab were scared to walk home after school. So I organized rides to bring them home or to their jobs so they felt safe. Later on in the year, I hosted our school's Fourth Annual Community Iftar, the meal Muslims eat to break their fast during Ramadan. With nearly 400 people in attendance, we celebrated our community members. We heard directly from students about why this event is so meaningful to them. Sharahan said, "We appreciate you supporting us," as she greeted the audience. One student at the event, who is not Muslim, pulled me aside to thank me. "You care," she said, with tears in her eyes. Showing up for students and families like this is not an additional responsibility of our jobs, but rather a central tenet of what it means to be a teacher. As you can see from Susanna's comment, there's the trickle effect for all students. When we lift each other up, when we celebrate each other, and when we create spaces to recognize our full selves, we help everyone. This is what our American dream is about. I'm not saying this is easy, but this is what we do in Vermont. Teaching is under fire nationally. Teachers are afraid to teach certain books or topics to host events like these. But we are Vermont. We are a model for what true, inclusive, culturally responsive teaching looks like. We don't just recognize differences, we celebrate them. And by doing so, we uplift each other. This is my daily work. As a history teacher, I create courses that represent my students' experiences and help them learn about our past to understand our present. As an English teacher, I create bookshelves where students can find stories similar to theirs and read writers they can relate to. As a literacy specialist, I equip students with the skills they need to read critically and embed reading instruction into culturally responsive and inclusive learning environments. In all my roles, I create countless joyous moments for students to share their voices, their writing, their ideas, their own genius with our community. When we do all of this, all of our students succeed. My greatest joy is when students are proud of themselves and their voice. "Miss Caitlin, they want to publish the story I wrote about my mom." "Miss Caitlin, I couldn't believe they read my essay and liked it. It may be the best one." "Miss Caitlin, I know I am powerful now." So yes, the headlines may be dark at times, but I truly have the greatest job in the world. Not only do I get to smile and joke with students, but I get the honor of crafting their learning experiences. I get to nurture their beliefs in the American dream and the idea that we should all experience what it feels like to be fully accepted for who we are and that we can all achieve high levels of success. I get the joy in creating moments for students to know the power of their voice. As Teacher of the Year of Vermont, I will seek to elevate student voice and demonstrate how powerful it can be when we create classrooms and schools that honor our students' full identities. I want everyone to know that the American dream is alive and well in Winuski, Vermont.
Thank you. Thank you. Perfectly, perfectly within five minutes. All righty. And the last vote we have today would be Sonia, who is coming from Walcott Elementary School. So Sonia, if you are, well, maybe we'll let the room settle for a hot second, but you are, you are free to start whatever you wish.
Hi, hello. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. Over the past few years, there have been many threats posed to education, such as the banning of books, defunding, and attacks on the intentions, integrity of educators. While these things must be addressed, they have created distraction from the real challenges that educators face every day. And educators know that we have real problems to solve. One such challenge is the emotional and social well-being of our children. As a public school teacher of 20 years, I've seen a rise in the mental health struggles of our children. Children are coming to school stressed, depressed, and anxious, and feeling disconnected, lonely, and lacking a sense of belonging. This is directly impacting students' ability to engage with and in school. U.S. Surgeon General Dr. Murphy called loneliness a public health epidemic in May of 2023 after a poll was released from the APA. In addition, depression rates are on the rise. As we know, when people are hurting, they hurt people, including themselves. Children are struggling to regulate and have lagging social skills, which presents itself as behavior. As a result, educators are exhausted and experiencing compassion fatigue. We could get into all the factors that have influenced the growing need, but many will only be alleviated through economic, environmental, and health policies that lift our vulnerable communities and help them heal. With that said, there are actions schools can take that help our communities by building community, safety, and belonging. Over the last two years, I have implemented restorative practices. Restorative practices teach students how their brains work, how to regulate their emotions, and give students space to reset in order to be ready to learn. We need to address behavioral struggles in restorative ways, not ways that lead to shame and further isolation. Let's finally admit that punitive actions such as timeouts do not fix the problem but create a further divide between teachers, administration, and those that commit the harm. Replacing timeouts with space to reset allows students the opportunity to learn regulation skills. Rooted and indigenous practice, the Circle promotes community, inclusion, equality, fairness, and connection. In Circles, students discuss topics that are important to them with space for choice. Within the Circle, students can solve problems and take responsibility. It contributes directly to a sense of safety and belonging in school. And brain science tells us that both of these things are needed for children to learn. At the end of the school year, I asked my sixth graders what they wanted adults to know about Circles. One student said, "What I like about Circles is that it gives me and my classmates the opportunity to share what's on our minds and express our feelings and not be judged for it." Another stated, "What I like about them is I can listen and understand the person's point of view and get to know them better. That is why I listen more." In addition to restorative practices, we need to focus on community-based schools that reflect the people that live there and their needs. All schools need to have full-time nurses, mental health clinicians, guidance counselors, and access to telehealth. We need to work closely with our school-based mental health programs. That is what we've been doing in Walcott. As school staff and, all school staff and pre-service teachers must be trained in trauma-informed practices. We must address the lagging social skills through weekly lessons. To further our goal of creating belonging, students need to know that when they walk into the doors of our school, they can be exactly who they are. We need to talk to families and students about who they are and what they value and use this as a springboard to create a welcoming environment for all. Each student needs to be able to identify at least one adult in the building that they could go to without judgment or fear. In addition, what better way is there to develop a sense of belonging than to elevate the voices of our young people? I have witnessed the power of our youth to be part of the change as they led restorative circles in our school. Give students opportunities to lead and to be self-directed learners. This creates a sense of purpose. Finally, we need to get our kids outside every day. Spending time in nature, as little as 15 minutes, can improve emotional well-being and mental health, reducing anxiety and depression, as well as improving cognitive abilities. When you get outside, when you can't get outside, there are also benefits to playing nature sounds into the classroom and incorporating movement. I know that this is not an exhaustive list of things that can be done and to improve our students' social and emotional well-being, but it is a start. Children cannot learn if they do not feel safe and have a sense of belonging. Let's create a strong community that wraps its arm around our children and their families. You will.
Thank you very much. Can they hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, all three of you. Thank you, and thank you, all three of you. I can imagine that the selection process to get to this stage was very competitive, and it's a testament to each one of you and your teaching styles that you're here, and just the commitment that you have to your students and to your schools and to your communities is really admirable. So I am very appreciative of your work, and I'm sure I'm joined by everyone in this room. I think Suzanne.
I would say, I know, I know, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I know Josh is on the call. Josh, do you, are you aware of any other information we should let the board know about? I filled them in, but I wasn't sure if he wanted to say anything about this process.
Maybe if we could just recap the next steps?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Go for it. Oh, you can go. So I know that Suzanne said she has the physical copies, so once everybody has them filled out, Suzanne can send them to myself directly, and Josh and I will go through, you know, tabulate the scores and send everything along to Zoe. So I believe we wanted that done, today is Wednesday, by Friday of this week, November 23rd. So if it's all coming from Suzanne, I know it'll happen next time, so that's good to know.
And then Zoe, you make the final decision? Alright, thank you so much.
And Katie, do you want to share a little bit how the Teacher of the Year selected is notified and announced? What's the timing for that?
Um, I don't, let me see. Josh might know, yeah, okay, go for it, Josh.
Yeah, so we're gonna submit the recommendation and the materials to Zoe, who's going to make the final decision, and then we're gonna work internally with our communications team, directly with the leadership of the Teacher of the Year's LEA, and kind of schedule that, and we will be typically releasing the Teacher of the Year information the day of, I believe, a celebration at their school, and announcing them as the Teacher of the Year.
Thank you.
And then there's a national competition, correct?
Yes.
There is a national competition. Once the Teacher of the Year is identified, Katie and I will submit the Teacher of the Year information to the national organization, yes.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Alright, well, best of luck to all of you, and it's just really been a pleasure to have some time with you this afternoon.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you want to vote in for me, that'd be great. I'm not gonna cheat and look and see if you guys.
Thank you, Suzanne, for organizing this and getting it to Katie and Josh.
Okay, that's fine, I'll come back.
Thank you. Sorry.
Camera's still, she's reflecting, I guess. Absolutely.
I don't, I don't know. I was gonna say, when we're ready, when we're back on, we can turn to the interim secretary's report, and we'll go back to item F on our agenda.
So just a real quick question and comment. It's like, some of the questions here are a little confusing, like, because we try and explain the platform, but it would've been nice to just have a little bit, maybe, of background for comparing, like, you know, I think one of the first questions was, how does their platform meet with the states? I forget the first question.
Having like a baseline of priorities.
The standards they're trying to do. Right, 'cause I wound up not really knowing what that was, and it would've just been nice to have something to compare it to, or even if they submit something in writing what their platform is, or what, you know, how it compares, that would be, I think, helpful.
I think that feedback is helpful, maybe, for the next cycle. It sounds like, yes, for the next cycle, I think it would be helpful for you to receive the application packet in advance of the meeting, so we can talk through that, how to make that available to you, so you have a little bit more time to process.
Hopefully, we'll all be here again next year.
I love Rubrik. It might be helpful that you all use such a looking handle.
Alright, Zoe, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, that was certainly inspiring to hear from our educators, so that's what we're all here for, is to support our phenomenal educators across the state. So in my update today, I'll just share some of the work we've been doing at the Agency of Education since we last met, really focusing on developing our strategic plan as an organization, and ensuring that we can align our initiatives and support to the priorities of communities across the state of Vermont. So I wanted to highlight a couple of key operational improvements that we're focusing on at the agency, along with outlining some of the goals and initiatives that we're looking to roll out to elevate outcomes statewide. So first, as we look at operational improvements, we're working diligently to improve data accessibility and to enhance reporting. I think that this is really important for all of the work we're doing in the state to contemplate the future of public education. Grounding those discussions and data information in fact is really important, and so we're working to release a series of reports. Most recent will be, the soonest will be next week, where we're looking at a state of the state of education in Vermont, and compiling a number of different indicators, academic enrollment, demographics, to put together a framing for those conversations, and subsequently, we'll be doing some deeper analysis. But just note that that's one of our focus areas in terms of operational improvements. The second is in increasing and refining our communication to the field to ensure consistent messaging, and getting feedback from our educators around the best method to do that, and so looking to launch some additional informational series and technical support this year. The third area is working on inter-agency collaboration, and really being able to maximize the leverage and the expertise of our team members across departments to advance the critical work that we support. Related to goal-setting, a few priority areas have emerged, which I shared last time. We are working to improve literacy outcomes, and also math outcomes, expanding college and career readiness, and supporting students' mental health. So as we're going through our planning process, we are diving deeper into the data to really understand the current state and where there are opportunities for improvements. We also are launching a Listen and Learn tour as the agency, which I'll share a little bit more detail about, but through that process, we're looking to validate these as focus areas and get very concrete input from the field around how we can refine the support from the agency to advance this work across the state. The Listen and Learn tour, we are excited to launch that. I wanted to share with you the purpose of the Listen and Learn, and also to map out the phased approach, so that the board has a sense of what to expect from now through, you know, through the late fall. So the purpose of our Listen and Learn is for the Agency of Education to engage deeply with the field in centering our work around the priorities for education across the state. We are taking a phased and methodical approach to this work. This summer has really been focused on data reporting and analysis, and bringing that information together, so that we're approaching this work very objectively and rooted in where we need to focus our efforts. In the month of September, we're doing regional planning sessions with our education leaders, so this is bringing together our superintendents and principals, business managers, curriculum directors, teachers, to do planning and really roll up our sleeves, identify, you know, what we're seeing are some really important considerations to bring into the fore as we're looking at these initiatives regionally, identify some of the strengths and the opportunities. And so we're working really collaboratively right now to define concretely the objectives for those planning sessions, because it really is paramount that we make the most of that time, and that we come out of that session with something really actionable to coordinate on. That work will also help us to frame up broader public input sessions that we'll be hosting in the months of October through November. Those, again, will be hosted regionally, and we're working through identifying the best way to structure that, but there's two tenants that are guiding that work. One is facilitating sessions that promote informed input, so certainly want to be able to share some background information as we engage in those discussions. We also want to ensure that there's two-way engagement. So we do, we are working with a consultant who is helping us through this work, and we'll be able to facilitate some of these conversations, and the intent is for it to really be in smaller groups and be able to have a back-and-forth dialogue and to capture many of those priorities.
Sorry, and that's the board group? Who would be in the meetings with you?
Yeah, so October through November, this is the broader public, so this is really engaging communities at large and providing input around those priorities that are most important to the region. We will really be framing those discussions based on a lot of the planning we're doing with the education leaders, to make sure that those conversations are contextually relevant and really resonate with the communities in those areas. A key, a really critical part of this work is to support alignment. So certainly, the Listen and Learn is helping the Agency of Education align our strategic plan, but also provides opportunities to provide input to the Commission on the Future of Public Education, which I sit on as well. And we've been working, I've been working really closely with the Commission and the Steering Committee around aligning this work in a way that will be supportive of the Commission's goals. So I just want to make sure that that's noted, because I think that's a really important element of this work. Related to the Commission on the Future of Public Education, Chair Samuelson has provided an overview. The only thing I would add is a reflection that there's an understanding of the enormity of this work, and the critical importance of this charge. I think people are coming to the table in really authentic ways committed to doing this, and really thinking about how we can have a state-of-the-art education system in the state of Vermont that is also sustainable and affordable. And those are challenging principles to balance as we go into this work, and so we continue to talk about education quality and affordability, right? It's not just a conversation around affordability in these discussions. As Chair Samuelson mentioned, the next Commission on the Future of Public Education meeting will be on Monday. That'll be an opportunity to begin finalizing the work plan, and through that work plan, there'll be additional opportunities for public input and engagement. The General Assembly included an appropriation to bring on a consultant to support with some of the services, and so there'll be some further thought around the expertise that is needed for the consultant. So we've put forward some preliminary considerations, one of them including data modeling, right, to really understand, you know, as we think about our system and what changes might be beneficial, really being able to analyze that impact. So that's just one expectation, but the Commission has not finalized that list. We just proffered kind of an initial set of considerations that I know will be further considered. One thing we all noted, as you probably know, in procurement process can take some time, and so that's why it's helpful that the agency's doing a Listen and Learn, and we're being intentional, at least in these, you know, next few months, around how that, those forums and that work can be leveraged to support the Commission, but we would expect that there'll be some more refined work as the Commission defines the scope of the consultant's responsibilities. In terms of other legislative committees that the, around education, there is a School Construction Aid Working Group. I'll provide an update later in the agenda on that, and also the Literacy Council, and I'll share some more updates around that. So there's been a lot of activity this summer, just launching these key planning efforts, and I think they're being quite instructive and productive to moving us forward. There, I did want to kind of carve out some time, I know there were some, in response to some board inquiries, related to an article in Vermont Digger regarding the Lee High School. For those of you who may not have read the article, the story described a private educational entity that made a decision to close, and the AOE, just clarity, is not in control of the private decision, certainly cannot speak to the rationale behind that. But I think the most important thing is this article raised some questions about what level of quality we should offer to students who receive special education services, regardless of setting, and especially for students who typically have gotten service in more restrictive settings. So I think this prompts a much larger conversation with the board, and kind of building an understanding of some of, you know, how we're currently structured as a system. As an agency, we are developing a very thorough report to analyze our current special education system, and so that's something I think would be helpful to bring to this conversation, because the discussion is certainly related to therapeutic schools, independent schools, and special education more broadly. So I certainly think that that discussion probably would warrant a little bit more time with the board than we have in my secretary's report, but wanted to acknowledge the inquiries and also to share that we are being productive and really reflecting on our system, and again, doing that in a way that's very data-driven. As we go into the legislative session, I would expect that there'll be some discussion, and so want to be able to be prepared around that as we look at, you know, again, what level of services we want to offer our students who receive special education in Vermont. So with that, I'll close to see if there's specific questions.
Thanks for all the updating, thanks for all the good work on the strategic planning and the data. I'm going back to a comment you made this morning, and I'm looking at our parking lot up there. I'd like to put a parking lot item on our agenda that you could come back and provide a presentation to the board about how we credit, right, how do we make decisions about therapeutic schools? I think that has a lot to do with our rules, and I think one of the things that percolated for me, in reading the Digger article and doing some sort of ancillary research, is, you know, it's not, it's, it would, the board would probably benefit from better understanding what the, how the rules currently work, and also a reflection on, in particular, this being a potential case study. Are there opportunities here for us to be, needing to tune those rules up, aligning them better with other aspects of statute, and also really thinking about the extent to which our, we have therapeutic schools that may already be approved under old rules versus new rules and things along those lines? So if we could, using our new language, if we could add that to our parking lot list to maybe just have an educational opportunity for the agency to come, update the board on sort of what the landscape looks like, that would be helpful.
I would welcome that, as you're touching on, there is a lot of complexity, and it is related to rules, it's related to state statute, and I think it would be very helpful for us to have a more robust conversation.
And I think, if I'm remembering correctly, that it's on my running list that you were planning to come and talk to the board about special education in the fall.
Yes.
If we could have therapeutic, I think we, I'd like to have this be an and in both of, if that's okay, because I think the therapeutic schools is an aspect of our rulemaking, which we have not visited in a detailed way in quite a while, and it might be helpful, and it is, just the therapeutic schools is so complicated.
It is complicated.
So maybe just special education as a foundation, and then maybe we could talk specifically about therapeutic schools, so everybody has a level set on what, you know, sort of the guardrails are around that, and then we could talk about therapeutic schools. Then my second question is, I didn't hear you mention the status of the desk audit on the independent schools. Could you give us an update on that? Or did I miss it? I didn't, I was listening for it, because it'd be helpful to know.
Are you looking for me to provide an update on our overall process?
Yeah, where are we in the process? How are things going? That's been a real issue, you know, I think in our last couple of meetings, it's been a question we've posed back to you, was one of our requests. Be helpful to sort of know where we are in the process, next steps.
Absolutely. So I just want to clarify what you mean by the desk audit. So I think that was the assurance requirements and the new rules, okay, taking effect.
And the survey that you're using, that you used this fall.
Okay.
I think it's what you all call the ISTO.
Yes, so that's the Independent School Technical Assistance Forum. So that form has been completed. We are using this information to update required documents and to develop technical assistance and office hours for independent schools. I know that that was a question to make sure that there was, that we look back around to confirm and ensure understanding of what was required to be in compliance of that. So that's the update I have for today, but I do think we can certainly, if we look at that as a parking lot, bring that back for a broader.
It'd be helpful to know if, in what ways ISTO was revised per the state board comment and discussion we had at the May meeting.
Yes. And we had, I know we had responded to that in terms of how the updates were incorporated in the in the application, but we can go back to that and see from those minutes if there are outstanding questions that we can make sure to address.
Going back to your first, I think you were speaking around how your Listen and Learn tour will complement the Commission, or there was some language in between the two. I just wonder, in planning that, it's in, you know, I live in three rural counties where it's really hard to do community engagement work and get people to show up. And I think people's voices are really important. And so I think the thought of like two different listening sessions happening in rural communities is like, and one's for this purpose and one's for that, like, how that gets rolled out to rural areas, I think is really super important if you want people to really participate in meaningful ways. Because I'm hearing there's like, right, like, you're going to every county with the Commission as well, then Listen and Learn, and like, what does this mean?
Yeah, we're, we're having those.
That don't even have schools.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So certainly there is an opportunity for us to have tighter communication, and that's what we're working on, right? So the Listen and Learn was something that was planned before the Commission. And we're working really intentionally to make sure that that is synergistic with the work of the Commission in advancing those goals. So part of the work of the sub, so the Commission will be establishing a Subcommittee on Communication and Outreach. And one of the opportunities there is to, we kind of established the guiding principles for that group, and one of them is to build upon the existing forums that are already available to provide input. So that includes the Agency's Listen and Learn tour. It includes work that the Vermont School Boards Association, Vermont Principals Association, Superintendents, and many other associations are doing across the state. But yes, I think that's really important. I, I live in a rural community, and so as we really contemplate that, it's trying to be thoughtful about how we organize this in a way that really is engaging those that may not have participated before. One thing I want to clarify as I rolled out the phased approach, the work we're really doing in August and September is preparation work, right? It's work thinking about, how do we do this intentionally? How do we have these conversations with our education leaders in different parts of the state to think about these things? And these conversations have been so far very productive. They're giving exactly this input, you know, that we really need to be thoughtful, we need to do this well. And the Agency is very open to doing things a little differently and, and leaning on the expertise of our educators and our community leaders across the state to help inform what that looks like. And the last comment I would say is that these public input sessions, it, we don't want them to be a one and done, but, right? So beyond this Listen and Learn, that'd be October, November, the expectation will be there a lot of different sessions, and the, the Commission will be driving that and will create some connectivity so that there is alignment with that work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'll ask a question, I pack off.
I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, Jenna.
My question is quite related to hers around communication.
Yes.
I get a sense of inclusion and equity.
Yes.
And reaching out to folks who may have not been involved in this communication or structures. Often, it always leads me to think about how do we actually communicate with folks? I'm thinking about inclusion again and equity here. Some people are blind, as an example, some people have hard hearing. Do we use sign languages to allow those people to participate? Or are we just focusing on meeting with educators at, at their institutions rather than like families?
Yeah, so it's, the way we're looking at this is a two-phase approach, really engaging with educators to help us develop the approach in partnership. And then the October and November forums are really for the community at large. And your point around making that as inclusive as possible is noted, and I appreciate that. Those are some of the kind of logistical challenges that we're bringing in to this work and considerations that will be very important for this to be successful and really getting a diversity of perspectives. So I appreciate that. And I'm also very open, just having conversations too, as board members around, you know, your, your view and other input you might have about your specific communities or ways in which we can approach this work where will be most impactful.
Happy to connect, for sure.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And also our, our students. So Gray and Caleb, I would love to have conversations with you too around how we elevate the student voice in this work. And if any thoughts you have today, I'd love to hear, but we can also schedule some other time.
So unless you guys have comments that you want to share today, I'm going to go to Kim, and then we might, I'm just aware of the time, and I think we have people waiting.
So I'm the Lehigh School. I have a few things, and I had sent the questions ahead, and I, I know, I hear that that's not going to be more specifically addressed today, but I, I do hope that it'll be sooner rather than later because having sat on both iterations of the 2200 Committee, we didn't spend any time in my time on those committees around therapeutic schools. Those had been separately negotiated and, and other pieces of work that happened outside of the regular rule process. So I think that is not something, even in my intimacy with the topic, ever had a conversation in the open committee meetings that I was part of. So I think it is, is due for some understanding of financial accountability and oversight for therapeutic schools. I honestly didn't know that we pay for-profit schools. So a list of those and, and which of those are therapeutic, it sounded like nine out of 10 or 10 out of 11 are therapeutic, and how we hold accountability where there's no 990s or no other financial reporting that's public, as would be the case for nonprofits. On the list of approved schools that's currently up as of March of 2024, it makes no distinction between those that are eligible for public tuition and those that are not, which would be misleading in that there are three categories of schools. Approved schools, approved and ineligible to receive public tuition, and recognized. So by the look of that list, one might assume all are eligible to receive public tuition. And I don't believe that's the case. I certainly don't believe that that's what the legislature intended, and yet the list that's up there makes no distinction. So I really would love to see that remedied because that must be information that's available somewhere.
Yes, and I can, I can respond to that. So the updated list gets published in August, so that'll be up shortly. And the, the new directory does identify the approval status of each school. And just to confirm, you're absolutely correct, there are four different categories, and so those will be listed in this updated directory.
And maybe the term where the renewal is up, like, I know we know that for our terms, that would be great information, probably for the public as well. The desk audit question, I echo that we are looking forward to that update. I think that would be super important. And I think that I would also say that on these engagements, and I'm grateful that that's part of what's happening, I think that it sounds like a big focus of your work. And I know there are different ways for people to engage, and expecting people to come meet you where you are is the hardest task of being on any board, is to find that to be the way that's most available for people to engage. And so engagement can be thick and thin, there could be short surveys, there could be ways that information is gathered, but I think equally importantly is circling back so people can see the result of their engagement and see, in an ideal world, their voice is represented in the decision-making that happens from that. So I would encourage the multitude of ways that we can get input to these processes.
I appreciate that. And you're, you're absolutely right, to do this well takes great intentionality and focus. It is certainly our plan to provide multiple modalities to provide input. And I hear your point about ensuring that we can reflect back so people can see their input in the next steps, so. And I'm, I'm open as we go through this process.
I follow on something you just said that I find interesting, and I just learned something. I didn't know we published our lists in August. And I'm thinking from a parent's perspective, August feels kind of late.
And the one that's up now is March 2024, just to be clear, it's dated.
Okay. I'm, I don't know if there's flexibility to get a list up earlier, who's approved or not approved, but I imagine if I was a parent of a child, you know, and I was thinking through where I was going to put my kid in the school for fall, knowing whether or not they were approved for public tuition in August isn't particularly helpful to me. I need to know in June.
Do the schools have an obligation to, I mean, I know they have to say they're recognized or approved, but is there?
I would have to go back to, to respond to that, but I, I would just share that as, you know, part of my role of being at the Agency for four months, there is a reevaluation on a lot of timelines, just to make sure that things are matching up to when decisions are made. So I think it's a fair question, I just don't have the response for you today.
I'm not even sure it's a, I was just noticed, like, it just got me, I was like, huh! And I was putting on my mom hat.
Right.
That said, if I was needing to make a decision, August would feel really hard, that would be a really hard timeline for me. I didn't know it was August, so it's just an interesting thing, sounds like something you're looking at.
I am just assuming it must also be March, because what is up there now is posted and dated March of 2024. So I don't know if that would be the norm, and this is more.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because the desk audits were still happening. And so maybe that's information you can come back and let us understand. And on that desk audit, I apologize, I did have one more thing. I don't think we ever got a copy to the updated form. I think there was mention in an email, update to the board, that there, the form had been updated based on feedback from the board. But there was no link to the form for us to see what that is. Because the other thing in the article was that there was not a licensed educator, special educator on staff at the Lehigh School, and it's a therapeutic school. So that, like, is very difficult to understand how that could possibly be the case for an approved school, for-profit, receiving our public tuition for a therapeutic, the most, I think, most vulnerable population of students in need of our support. So I would, I would love for us to see that updated form and get, when we get that update, or sooner, because you guys alluded, you referenced it but didn't include the link.
I'll go back, that was unintentional, so we can go back and correct that. But I, I do think this, clearly on the parking lot, is important to have a fuller conversation. And I do think it's important to put that in context with the rules, right, and requirements. So we'll probably need to do some initial framing just around that as we go into these set of questions.
I could envision a follow-up conversation where we revisit that section of the rules.
And I don't know, Jennifer, did it ever, like, did the therapeutic section of the rules come up in the 2200 before I was on that committee?
So there was a discussion over Rule 2232, which is specific to therapeutic schools and the requirement of, like, the categories of expenses. That was a hard-fought negotiation between the Agency, the independent schools. And I was asked to basically go mediate those conversations because they were stuck. But that was really limited to 2232. And we did not touch 2232 on this latest round.
I know, and I guess as a matter of process, that not being a public committee, like, a hard-fought negotiation behind closed doors for a public rule would be not ideal practice. And I knew it came before my time.
I think that was set up by the Act 173 group. Like, I didn't have anything to do with that.
Yeah, I don't know, but the rules were open and we didn't address them for the reason you said.
Because I think they, then.
That had already been negotiated, so I'm just saying, as a matter of process, if we need to look at that section of the rules again, we might.
They had forwarded to the Act 1, well, this little subcategory, the Act 173 group, was tasked with updating 2232. Hard-fought negotiation, so I sort of came in late in the process. And then they sent that recommendation, kind of like what the Act 1 Working Group did, where they sent their recommendations of updates to the rules to the board. And we got public comment on, I mean, if you remember, this goes back to, you know, the fall of 2021. We got public comment on 2232, and we sent it back to the Act 173 Working Group and said, this was something that you guys had decided, we're going to give you guys another bite at the apple. So that, I don't know if you remember, but that happened in like the fall of 2021 into January of 2022. And what they came back and told us was, they did not want to retouch 2232 because it was such hard-fought language that they all had sort of reached the agreement that they reached and they weren't going to go back and look at it. So that was our response to the public comment that we received, was that we had consulted with the Act 173 Working Group, and they recommended no further changes.
Yep, and I would just say that in light of what's come to light and the process that's evolved since then, it's inadequate for ensuring accountability to students, it's inadequate for ensuring accountability to public, use of public dollars. And it is, I'm not exactly sure, the use of hard-fought negotiation as a reason for us not to revisit something that has.
I'm not saying that, I'm just talking about how that rule came to be. I'm not saying that that's not a reason to look at it. But I mean, the other thing is, and I mean, I don't know enough about Lehigh, but there was a complaint, there was an investigation, and now the school is closed. So I think, you know, when I look at the process and what those rules are set up to do, you know, it's unfortunate that there was a complaint and investigation, but that's what the process is set to do. So if there's a school that is not complying with the rules, we have a process that's in place, and that process worked.
I think the accountability that comes ahead of a complaint, particularly of that extreme nature and a result of this extreme result, is a responsibility that we should take seriously and consider what is lacking to ensure better accountability.
And I think that goes back to the report that Zoe's going to give us about, you know, so we've got this technical assistance review that the Agency is doing with approved independent schools as a condition of their approval. Maybe, it's not my decision, but like, maybe the Agency would do something similar with therapeutic schools, just to, you know, have that ongoing oversight and, you know, ensure on an annual basis that the therapeutic schools are also doing what the rules require them to do.
And the reason why the Agency is doing it now is because it's in our rules. So I think we have a responsibility to put it in rule if we think it would be important that there be that annual check-in for therapeutic schools, which, again, I think is a complete oversight, that it wasn't swept in with that responsibility for now. But I, I haven't looked at that section closely because like it, we were sort of, that was like a don't-touch-it section.
Well, if I may, I think this is a great opportunity for the state board and the Agency to work together. This is clearly an area of the rules that I certainly haven't, that we haven't spent a lot of time on since I've been on the board. This particular instance brings up some questions, I think we all are having, and so maybe we scaffold this out by, if the Agency can give the board a nice presentation on the status of sort of what the rules currently say, what statute currently says, the stat, the status of review, right? We can all come together to figure out next steps. Because it may be something we need to look at going forward. I'm not sure what the "that" is yet, right? And so I'm hopeful that by making it a parking lot and we get a presentation, we can have a really good conversation about what, if any, the next steps need to be.
I appreciate that comment, not sure what "that" is, right?
Yeah.
And the reason I said is, I do think the, the articles touched on a couple of important points. So certainly, Kim is bringing up questions just around the overall accountability process around therapeutic schools. But I think it also brings up broader questions around what is the need for special education services for our students in the state? And so we're really trying to approach this from understanding those broader trends to begin contemplating, how, how might we serve students in different ways as well, right, to meet their full needs? And I think that dovetails really nicely with this broader conversation on the Commission on the Future of Public Education. So I want us to certainly respond to that specific question around the rules, but I think there is an opportunity to contextualize this within the broader discussion around how we best meet the needs of Vermont students.
All right, I think we need to leave it there for now. I'm aware of, I think this brings us to the new health and physical education standards. Do we have Ian with us?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Oh, hi.
Welcome, Ian, thank you for being here. So just wanted to provide a little bit of framing for Ian's presentation, we're happy to have him here at the State Board meeting. Today, we're, Ian will focus on the content of the new health and physical education standards that are being proposed. We do, this will not be up for a vote today. We recognize that this is the first time that we're bringing new standards to review, oh, it's okay, since the education quality standards were passed. And so we want, at the next meeting, to also have a broader conversation and discussion of process and historical context and the role of the board in approving standards. But today, we thought it would be helpful to at least be, begin and focus on content today. This is also a chance for us to capture any additional questions you might have about the standards so that as we continue to bring these forward to you as a board, we are preparing a, a full set of, you know, responding to the full set of considerations that you might have as you're reviewing new standards. So with that, Ian, I will turn it over to you.
Maybe just for Caleb's benefit, so one of the responsibilities of the board is to approve the standards. We have something called the EQS. We have something called the EQS, the Education Quality Standards, which is sort of a broad framework. And then there are specific standards like Common Core, Next Generation Science Standards. And so one of the sets of standards that we have are around health and physical education. One of the responsibilities of the State Board is to approve those. So just a little bit of context. I thought, I was sitting here thinking, maybe that might be helpful. And also as a reminder to us all, what sort of this presentation is setting up. So I think what you're saying is that the agency intends to bring a new set of standards to us in these topic areas and we will be asked to consider these in the near future.
And the goal today would be, you know, to share the content with you to take note of any additional questions you have and actually come back as early as next month if the board desires to, to review and vote on those in the context of a presentation on the broader responsibilities of the board.
And with the new EQS coming out as well, just make sure that everything's aligned to that in terms of the presentation. So I'm going to just provide a little bit of background on both the health and physical education standards before talking about a potential rollout of what adoption might look like in terms of implementation on the ground. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, first about the national health standards. So the national health standards, they're, we're on our third edition. The originals came out in 1995. They were edited and revised in 2007. This board adopted the 2007 standards in 2015. So these are standards that are currently in place in Vermont, so the 2007 standards. And around 2015, that's when a lot of national standards were adopted. So it's also the same for physical education. So this group in 2007 was a joint committee on the National Health Education Standards that created these national standards. In 2022, a group of the National Consensus for School Health, they put forward some standards. And just in March 2024, Shape America put forward their addition of the National Health Education Standards. So we are recommending the adoption of the National Health Education Standards from Shape America. And I'm going to provide just a basic overview of some of the big changes in the standards without going too far into like what these look like. But what some of the big changes is, is this transition from defining what health is as just the absence of disease or injury. So it's looking at not just behaviors, but health and wellbeing overall. So looking at mental health as well as physical health. Also this focus on active engagement, so this agency of students or individuals to act on the health and wellbeing of those folks around them as well. So that's also really comes through in the new standards. There's more autonomy that's provided for teachers to adapt around what influences, impacts students from, you know, family, community to other. And there's a few other things that have come through with the strengths and assets-based approach to health, not just looking at, don't do this, this is disease, this is injury, don't, you know, looking at some of the things that people can build off of. So that's one of the high level kind of things. There's a bunch of other parts as well. So a lot of the things that are in the new national health standards, these are also a revision and not a rewrite. So the changes are pretty small compared to the 2007. So we're not looking at a dramatic potential shock to teachers. And I've also engaged with quite a few teachers that just see this as a natural progression. So that's national health standards. And I know I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to go relatively quickly here. So the next is the health, physical education standards. This wasn't actually a rewrite. So the first standards for physical education came out in 1995, were revised in 2004, and again in 2013. Currently, the 2013 physical education standards are in effect in Vermont. Those were adopted by the State Board in 2015 as well. In March, Shape America also released the National Physical Education Standards that are, I would say, more of a rewrite than a revision. And because of, a lot of this is structured around some of these larger changes that I'll go over. They originally had five standards. They now have four. And a lot of that was trying to focus on the domains of learning, so psychomotor, affective, social, and cognitive. They also went from grade level outcomes to grade span indicators. This is a huge change, looking at individual grade level outcomes for students and now looking at more bandits, okay, too. I've talked to quite a few teachers about this. I was actually in a school district yesterday. This is, they're very excited about this because there's a lot, there's a lot to go on with the grade level outcomes as well. These standards are much more student-centered. I think that there's been a transition just generally in the field about preparing students for lifelong active lifestyles and not necessarily meeting a physically fit or a marker of, you know, physical literacy or physical competency. It's about building those skills and those passions for, for movement after graduation. So there's, it can be individualized because of that, you know? Skiing, hiking, we live in Vermont, there's lots of opportunities to be physically active beyond just playing basketball. There's also a couple other noticeable change. You'll see standards two. So standard two is the affective, or sorry, the cognitive elements of physical activity. Standard three is the social elements and standard four is the affective. So this is a greater focus on those elements of physical education. It's not just motor skills, right? It's the social elements, it's understanding tactics, it's finding love of movement. So this affective domain of what's meaningful, what's personally beneficial for you, as well as personal growth through physical activity. Body composition is a factor of physical health is removed from the new standards. I think we've, the science of BMI has been refuted in terms of how it's a good measure of health. So that's been taken out. There's also a greater focus, and I think across all of these standards, there's a greatest, greater focus on SEL just more broadly, which I think does align with the changes that have been now adopted for EQS too, as well as student-centered, all that stuff that's come through in the new EQS revisions. And then the process of skill development is a greater emphasis on this. And these are just a few of the things. There's, there's a lot that's changed in the PE standards. But as I said, I think a lot of educators are excited by this, the changes that have been proposed, in part because it allows for more autonomy for teachers and more flexibility for students. So one of the big things is defining the skill. So with finite details and context with the GLO to making it more broad in terms of like underhand, doing effective underhand throw. And in the GLOs, it'd be like to a partner in movement, da, 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 da. So it puts on these markers of potential specificity that made it really hard for teachers to bring creativity to the process, but also students to meet it. So this has been something that's, the educators I've talked to are really excited about. They can, they can meet the standards not by just simply doing a soccer unit. They can do it or a bowling or, you know, they can, people are adaptive in how students meet this. So this is just a content cover. I will share the standards with part of the green sheet documents so you all can see them. But if a rollout were to happen, if these standards were adopted in September, this is roughly what it would look like. And it's already started to a degree. So I am currently working with a number of school districts and educators on engaging with these new standards. I was in the Mississauga Valley yesterday. I'll be in White River Valley tomorrow. I think that because the field, there's a general excitement for these standards. There's been a drive to, what is this, what's going on here? Can you talk to me about it? Stuff going on. Developing proficiency-based graduation requirements, messaging is obviously important. I also collaborate regularly with the Castleton, UVM to a degree, Norwich Higher Ed Collaborative, the institutions that certify health and physical education educators and helping them to have those conversations around how would we support our education base in implementing these standards. And those conversations have been already taking place and hoping to continue this year as well. As well as participatory action research, we're currently working in five school districts in Vermont where we engage with educators on the ground to support these kind of conversations here. When I can say educators say this, but also to support them and refine our work through the process. And yeah, developing and releasing guidance documents, professional learning. Shape America has been really supportive of, is showing interest in supporting Vermont's implementation of the standards. And I've been communicating with folks at the national level pretty regularly. So if all of that happens, it would be a Fall '26 rollout. And I think there's a lot of alignment with the new EQS revisions as well that could support this too. So that is my presentation.
Thanks, Ian. I am, I stand on the EQS committee, so the EQS is like, you know, tattooed in my brain. So I have a few questions. Some of these questions may be just precursor questions for the kinds of things that you might want to answer for us in the future. And some of them might be things that you know off the top of your head. And I say that so that you feel comfortable saying, I don't know where I need to get back to, okay? But I, I, I think that these would be questions that you might expect from us as a part of this process. At least from me. I think it would be helpful to know the number of states that have already, right? That have already adopted the National Health Education Standards and also the SHAPE standards. And who has not adopted them and why. The second thing is, is that in the EQS, you know, as a part of establishing a broader framework for inclusive education, gender identification and gender transition are specifically referenced. And I know from talking with educators in the field, that's an area in which they would really like some support and additional clarification and guidance. Do either of these standards provide that guidance in, in a way so that we could be clear and consistent across our districts and schools in the state? Or would that be something that we would need to supplement these standards with in terms of our own policies and practices? The other question I had that came up a number of times in our EQS were this discussion of time requirements or for physical education classes. I know the folks on the ECAS will remember that, that right now the EQS is written so that you're required to have two PE classes per week. There are some, some additional requirements around minutes. It'd be interesting for us to understand the extent to which the SHAPE prescribes, right? And specific sort of, you know, dosing for physical education and the extent to which there may or may not be an alignment. Or maybe we are, maybe our EQS just provides those in these dozens. So just a few things that come off the top of my head that it would be really helpful for, to get further clarification on.
Yes. So I can actually answer most of those questions.
Excellent.
The only one that's a little bit of trouble is the first one with the number of states. Because a lot of states have individual standards that they may base closely off of the national health standards and say, we use it as a framework by which to build our standard. So there's a close alignment. So it's hard to parse that number out. Older data suggests that in 2017, 25 states have the national health standards, 2016, 37. And when I say that it's a little harder, as I said, because it's so closely aligned that it could be a word here, a word there, but they're saying that they adopted our standards.
A broader framework.
Yes, exactly.
That's helpful.
And I also wrote SHAPE America this morning because I figured that question was going to happen. So I might be able to give you more updated data on that as well. As for the gender inclusive conversation, I think that these standards are, are national in scope. So they need to work in Idaho as much as they need to work in Vermont. So I think that they provide a framework by which to have conversations around gender inclusivity, especially sexual health inclusivity. And a lot of our content that's established for health, not a lot, most of our content for health is established in statutes. So 16 VSA 131 establishes the content by which schools should provide, what they should provide content on in classes. The standards are more skills-based, so they're more broad. But I think that, you know, we have the essential topics in sexual health education, which is very much gender inclusive in terms of how to support inclusive environment in those conversations. I think that it can provide a base for those conversations really nicely. And then the last point you had was question.
Time.
Oh, so I actually, my first, a year ago in a legislative session, that question came up. So I can probably send some testimony on that I did on that topic because it's not.
It's come up a lot. And when we were working on the EQS, it came up a lot. And so we left it unchanged at the time, but if we're adopting these standards, I just want to make sure things are aligned.
And I think there's a difference between physical activity and physical education, right? So see, time is not necessarily a representation of that students are being active. And it's also not a representation that learning is always going to be through the roof, right? If we increase the number of minutes that a student is getting in for PE, that may not have a negative effect. Physical activity, that's, we, we know that that works. But PE, the timing, the research is a little weird. But I'm happy to provide that too.
Yeah, maybe if you can just give us a written response to those questions or in your, when you provide your cover letter that comes with the standard, I, I think those are things that the board is going to be asked. And that would be then part of the public documentation and that would probably help the public actually respond and think about this too. Thanks, Ian. This is great. Really appreciate it.
I'll get more data on the states. It's just, it's hard to parse out.
I understand. It's, it's not clear cut. But I do think that will be a question that the board has asked, you know, or we would be asking when we were doing it. So I was trying to think, foreshadow things that might come up so that you can be, maybe providing that when the materials come in rather than having an additional Q and A. So very much appreciate the detail on the presentation in advance. And I know you've been really thoughtful about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thinking specifically about high school and time again and credits. And you need 1.5 credits and that comes down to time and that. And then we have personal learning plans. How does SHAPE come down or this come down with students being allowed through a personal learning plan to opt out of a year and a half of phys ed in high school?
As far as I know, the state does not have an opt-out program. So a PLP does not represent a student opting out from the, the learning that they're responsible for still doing. So some schools do that through a independent study. So they'll have a PE teacher facilitate a student doing something that might be rock climbing on weekends or working at a rock climbing organization. And they're still required to assess the standards and they're still required to hold the student accountable to whatever the locally defined proficiency-based learning outcomes are. This is a national question of can we opt out? I think that some folks are using the PLP potentially as that. But I don't think, I, I don't have enough information to say like this is what's happening all over the state. But that's what, as far as I know, what is in writing, that we're not an opt-out state.
It was currently a school by school issue.
I'm not, I'm not calling on people.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was going to ask about the body composition part of that. Can I just get more clarity on that? So it's just not related at all anymore? I mean, I remember just like in elementary school, for instance, when we do our like fitness unit, it was always like you have, because body composition, you mentioned BMI, which makes sense because people have been saying that BMI is terrible for forever. But like, whether like height or weight or anything like that, you know, that was always part of like your fitness profile, I guess, when I was in elementary school. So how, like, what did that look like before and how has that changed?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, first off, I probably could get more information around that. But I think it's focusing on this full health piece too. So BMI, like I have a very high BMI just because I'm athletic and I work out a lot. And I don't fit a lot of those classic definitions of what a proportional person is supposed to look like. And if you look at the history of where BMI came from, it's also just like crazy where it came from. But for body composition in terms of just weight inclusivity, I think that we have to balance the impacts of doing something like that in a classroom and how it might impact the mental health of students, not just the, you know, physical health of a student. So I think that that's where some of the realization has come from is that measuring students by BMI or these, these markers of what is fit, fitness, it's, it's not subjective, but it is often norm reference, which creates a whole world of problems in itself. So I think it's just an understanding that student health is not just specifically one dimension. So I think that, that doesn't really fully answer your question, but I hope that gives you a sense of why we did that.
So what is that, what does that look like? Like, let's talk with like weight. So you're saying previously the standard would be some, I don't know what it would look like. What did it look like before in terms of like?
So before, we actually had in our SS state plan, the Fitness Gram. And that was a measure of student fitness. And so this was a state-level initiative. And in that body was composition. And so this was a state-level initiative, and in that body comp, was composition was recorded. We've since gone away from that assessment in part because of its lacking of inclusivity in terms of gender inclusivity. And I think that there's a couple other factors of realizing that physically, physical fitness is not necessarily a precursor for lifetime fitness too. So if you take a snapshot of a student in 11th grade, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to live a ha, a healthy lifestyle afterwards too. So some of that, I guess I can, I can conceptualize more about what that is. Like, for instance, I work with a group out of UVM that is weight, does weight-inclusive nutrition education and just understanding things that, such as like bad and good are not always, are in students' control. And some students may only have access to foods like fast food. And so how do we build a culture where food and body weight is not a negative for students so that they can develop other areas too? So I hope that, yeah. It's, it's complicated. There's a lot of gray, but there's growing research in this space. I wouldn't say that it's on the tip of every health educator's tongue in Vermont, but I think by taking this stuff out, it at least provides space for that conversation.
All right, yeah. Because I mean, I don't know anything about it, but you know, my thoughts on that is just worrying about, for me, all I know about it is that it's being taken out, making sure that body composition is still being discussed, you know, like at what level is it part of the curriculum? Because I think discussion on things like height and weight are still important, especially because I think America has an obesity epidemic, you know? So it's a balance between the, the mental health element of it, like you were talking about, and moving into a more modern era of discussing those things and how, just how our bodies are shaped compared to, I just, making sure it's still discussed, you know what I mean?
I can absolutely send you some research too, because I, I would say that it's not cut and dried, right? Rarely research is cut and dried.
Okay.
Yeah, hope that helps. Great.
I was just going to point you to the place in the new EQS where we speak to very specific seat time, which we couldn't find an origin of frankly, but we hadn't taken testimony, so we left it. So it's 2120.6 Curriculum Content Section E, which is PE, and it, PE and health. And I think that a couple of them are quite prescribed and run a bit, quite counter to proficiency graduation requirements. So to whatever extent that can be informed differently for the next iteration or, you know, flagged for, you know, defer to the standards kind of thing, I think that we were mindful that we had not taken testimony from the field on that and that we recognized it could possibly be problematic as it currently is, so.
I think that the field might also think if you took it out, it might deter their ability to hold their times for PE. Like PE teachers, if you talk to them, they're like, I want more time with my kids, I want more time with my kids.
And I think that informing that conversation as we're considering new standards, I think would be important. I appreciate we're not reopening this in my tenure on this board, but I do think it's a flag that we recognize before and now with the introduction of new standards warrants a conversation that doesn't, isn't based on fear of loss of positions, but rather alignment with the current expectations regarding proficiency-based graduation requirements and new standards. And then I have a process question for you, Jen, because I'm surprised to see these come before us. I'm kind of excited too. I think it's great. We should be keeping these updated, but this is a pretty quick process. And I know that back in 2023, we had a presentation of the social equity standards with IRIS, and we said that the EQS committee would take those up when they were done with EQS. So we're done with EQS, and I feel that we want to be responsive to that thoughtful work that came before us. And seeing the version of this process that we're considering, it'd be helpful for us to understand what the process for equity, social equity standards looks like.
So, yeah, I think you're right. We told, I mean, it has always been because it was a capacity issue, that we could look at the IRIS framework simultaneously with updating EQS because we're on a timeline. So that just finished in June. This is our first meeting since then. But I think, you know, what we're doing now is also establishing a process by which we will take in standards and consider them. So I think that's where we are.
And I offered to write for knowing that this was coming for our September meeting, I will write up a process that we can all consider. We haven't, at least in quite a while, the board hasn't considered standards, right? We've had educational quality standards, but that's like standards with a lowercase s.
Yeah, I don't think anyone on this board...
Right, and so one of the things Jennifer and I talked about is that we need a process that's applied consistently to all standards that would include those standards as well as these. We don't, it falls under our written procedures in that I will come up with something for the board to consider by way of process, and that we would discuss at our September meeting.
Okay.
And then that would be applied equally to all standards that were come, that we would be taking in. Again, we, to Jennifer's point, there's just been no opportunity to take them up. It wasn't something, it wasn't appropriate for us to take those standards up at this meeting.
Oh, no. I was just surprised by these in light of not having readdressed it earlier.
Well, I appreciate the agency bringing them to us in this presentation, my Ian, so we could start to think about that. It also, it was actually them bringing it to us that gave us the opportunity to say, you know, we really need to, part of our SOPs or procedures or guidelines, we need to actually have a written process so that it's clear what we, what we're going to do both to, to the public and the agency, right? And that we're consistent in what we do with standards going forward, so.
First, we thought it would be helpful to bring this for discussion, right? So that as we're going through the process, that we're mindful of what information would be important to bring to the board and what timeline. So sometimes I feel like that's easier to do when you have content in front of you to react to as opposed to thinking about it broadly. So hopefully this is a helpful exercise in really concretely thinking through the information that you would need to make an informed vote on approving standards. Thank you, Ian, for your thoughtfulness.
I know it sounds very, I really appreciate what everyone had just said and your perfect presentation.
Thank you.
My head is rambling around many points in this. I know a lot of it is work in progress. I just want to highlight that there are some aspects that I haven't heard explicitly, but I'm curious about. And if you don't have the answer right now, it's okay. I have not heard much about inclusion in terms of, like I mentioned, students with PLP, personalized learning plans could not or can opt out. And it sounds like there is, it's ambiguous. Some districts allow students to opt out, some students, some districts do not. I think that, I think, I think that's very ambiguous when these things happen. It's possible here, it's not possible there. It's very confusing and it doesn't, when I think of a PLP in our mindset is to meet our students' needs. So to meet our student needs, we need to differentiate that physical education or health class can still be differentiated within their PLP, modified in another word. So that, in that sense, I'm saying it, that in that sense, there is no opt-in or opt-out. It's just modified, just like how, how educators would modify instruction to meet. I'm thinking of this as an MTSS model, a MATAI chair system. If that makes sense a little bit.
And I was just thinking, remembering, like, as a concrete example, Essex Westford didn't recognize athletic participation as meeting those requirements for PE, but CBU, for instance, did. So they could use their participation on a team to meet their requirements for the one and a half credits or whatever it used to be when there were credits for graduation for PE. And so that is sort of a variable in how it was approached. CBU, I think, also had a maybe more structured PLP, active PLP process that allowed for their, I'm guessing to be, as you mentioned, some sort of PE teacher oversight on their independent learning. So where, that sounds like an opt-out because they're otherwise satisfying through being on the soccer team. They, I'm presuming, had to meet that qualification for that by doing some reflection or whatever the construct was, where at Essex Westford, that was not a flexibility afforded student athletes. And I've heard a number of different reasons over the years for why that is, but it's a variable. And I think it, it would benefit probably from some clarification around what the range of acceptable, you know, meeting these standards could look like. And that maybe goes to that same question of seat time, right? Like it's addressing the student's needs. And I know just in a very practical application, for students then to perhaps take, I don't know, the physics class or whatever it was that they wanted space to take, they may have had to have done something they could do online because they needed to satisfy the in-class PE even though they were a three-sport athlete, for instance. So I think outlining for schools what those ranges are could help meet what you're suggesting, Mohammed, that there's, how do we get to what student needs are so they can fit it all in because students are busy and I'm, I know motivated to learn, particularly in areas that are exciting to them, so.
And one last question I need to add with the cultural piece, who serve people from different backgrounds, some of whom refer to gays, grays, sorry. In some cultures, in some countries, they have a mask is a sign of wealth, is a sign of health. Whereas the skinny Mohammed could go to some country and be seen as, oh, he must be sick or something, whatever. So I'm saying this just to say again, in some cultures, they won't allow their female daughter to participate in certain sports. They want, here's an example, it's about wearing shorts, for example. Some cultures may not allow their daughter to wear shorts to play soccer. They may say, it's okay if you can allow my daughter to wear pants and play. But that doesn't match our structure here. So how can we thoughtfully incorporate all this into this process?
I, I will say, so everything that both of you said, I think fits nicely with the new standards in terms of physical education and that, that they are focused more on the skill than the context. So you might be able to show a skill in doing a team sport or in a dance activity that would have been more flexible. I think that generally, there's a, there's been more of an emphasis on the cultural elements of sports and active, physical activities in these standards.
That's good. That's the perfect example of the modification I was talking, do something that could be a good one.
And there's, and there's a lot of, at younger grades as well. You'll see in the great, the green sheet that I hope to send soon, once I get that finished, there's, there's a greater emphasis on cultural dimensions of physical activities in earlier grades. It used to only be through the context of dance. And so it's now looking at other activities through that lens.
That's good.
All right, I think we're going to leave it here. But thank you. This was a really good, rich conversation. Thank you so much.
May I ask one question, though? If, if there are other questions like this that come up as people sort of drive home, think about this, look at links of the standards, I would imagine if I was Ian, it might be helpful to hear those questions from the board in advance of doing your green sheet. Should, should we filter those to Jennifer, to filter to Zoe, to filter to Ian? Or do you want us to reach out? I'm just trying to think of how it is we could make that process efficient if there are other questions that come up and those are things we can short-circuit later.
I appreciate that because you can tell we're trying to get that, those questions in advance so that we're prepared to inform your decision-making. The most streamlined version would be sending it directly to Suzanne and just in your subject line indicating, you know, health and PE standards, feedback.
We're body masks.
And Ian, the standards are online, so if people want to look at, right, so people can look at the standards. Obviously, they're going, we're going to take them in officially, but again, I'm, I'm noting that there's an interest in expedite the process. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you for coming down. What I would ask, though, is if you end up sending questions, then Kim, you chime in here, I would envision that these likely are going to end up with the EQS committee. It would be helpful certainly for me to see the questions. So I don't know how that works with public meetings.
As long as...
I'd just like to know what question, if people send questions, I would find it really helpful to know what questions people are asking because that might help us. Thank you.
I was referencing the wrong thing first.
A little sugar. Nice.
Good job, Zoe.
Proud of me.
Yes, I am.
All right, so this is the overview of literacy and school construction legislation.
When we last met in June, we provided an update on the legislative session and wanted to take this opportunity to highlight some of the updates in terms of implementation on two key, two key policies. We'll talk about Act 139, the literacy bill, and also the school construction aid. And then I'll, I'll go through these pretty quickly and leaving enough room for us to have some conversation. So as a recap, Act 139 was passed in this last legislative session, and the major elements include a focus on reading, assessment, and intervention from kindergarten through third grade, literacy, professional learning, reinstating the Advisory Council on Literacy. We also have a full-time position now dedicated at the agency to literacy, and there's a focus on expanding early childhood literacy involving the Department of Libraries. At the agency, we recognize that an implementation of a new act takes a lot of concerted focus and support in the field. And with that in mind, we have launched a new initiative called Read Vermont. And Read Vermont is a comprehensive statewide program dedicated to improving literacy outcomes for Vermont students. We do have a targeted focus on K3, but as part of this effort are looking more comprehensively at ways in which we're supporting the needs of adolescent literacy and adult literacy as well. The vision is to ensure every child can read by third grade and that every child graduates high school ready for college or career. To do this work, we are brading multiple funding sources to focus on these priorities, which are designed to increase capacity building in the field. We have built this initiative based on input we have been receiving through the Literacy Advisory Council and also educators across the state in terms of what the biggest needs are to implement. So Read Vermont's priorities is focus on professional learning. We will be providing synchronous, virtual, in-person, and hybrid professional learning opportunities for educators. We will have a detailed schedule that we'll announce in October. Also, as part of this work, we will be bringing in resources for job-embedded coaching. And this will provide that intensive, personalized job-embedded coaching for elementary schools, teachers, and six to 12 supervised unions and districts over the course of this next year. We will have an application process for that, which will be communicating the details around shortly. We also felt it was important to build a broader network so that we are able to kind of build upon exemplars in the field in our state and leverage that learning. So we are, you know, expanding a network of leaders and educators, and we're looking at different levels of the system to involve that diversity of perspective and understand what is required to implement evidence-based reading practices effectively. The agency will also be providing a number of guidelines and resources to the field. We've started to respond to those, as you can imagine, and will be providing more organization to that in the coming, coming months. We also recognize that there is an element for family and caregiver engagement. I know in my prior work, I was involved in doing a number of parent universities just to help parents understand how to reinforce these practices at home for their students, and that is also a component of this work. So what we've been able to accomplish over the summer, we've done internal work within the agency. As I mentioned early on, we're doing a lot of inter-agency work. And with this being one of our strategic priorities, we have involved every single division and team across the Agency of Education to identify how they are contributing to advancing literacy outcomes in the state. We also have the learning modules that have been released. We have a memo that has been sent to superintendents as well around the next steps with this process. And we released a request for proposals, and we'll be hopefully getting it under contract with a vendor by... with a vendor by the end of September so that we can engage in this work with additional bandwidth and resources. So in terms of next steps, next month, we will have a webinar to really help provide better background knowledge around Act 139. We are working with many of our partners, such as the Reading League and others who have already started this work, that many of you may have participated in those webinars. We are continuing to stay in coordination. We also will close, so I mentioned that the RFP will close in September so that we can bring on some additional support for this. In October, we will announce those that will be participating in the professional learning and coaching opportunities, so that is an application process. And then in November, we'll be providing the screening instruments and guidance along with the Printle and Guardian notification recommendations will be issued. And that was all part of Act 139 in terms of the responsibilities of the agency. Just, you know, fast forwarding, part of this work is identifying recommendations for improvements to teacher preparation programs. So looking forward, there will be some recommendations that we will provide to the Vermont Standards Board to strengthen those programs, to prepare our educators. And so I'll pause there just to see if there's any questions around the Read Vermont initiative or any of the immediate next steps. But I could share, we're really excited and enthusiastic at the agency to be supporting this work in a very targeted way and working in coordination with the field to really help promote literacy outcomes statewide. Any questions on, yes, Read Vermont?
It's a lot of work and an aggressive timeline. Thank you for giving that.
It's lovely. Thank you. I guess that's one of my questions, too. I was struck by that and also knowing, sort of, do you have the capacity to do the work in this timeline with the kind of care that's going to be needed? I know that you have had some staffing challenges recently, so.
So as part, as I mentioned early on, as part of our strategic planning process, we've identified that promoting literacy is a key priority. And this work really came out of evaluating our internal resources. We're able to leverage some remaining ESER funds to develop this program and be able to contract with a vendor to support the rollout. Moving forward, from a sustainability perspective, we are looking at mechanisms for the state and the school to sustain this through different entitlement funding that we have. But those programs have already been budgeted for this cycle and we felt that it was really important to allocate additional resources towards the implementation of this. So Read Vermont is bringing in additional, we're bringing additional resources to help us.
Using the ESER funding?
Mm-hmm.
And then after October, you're going to look at title, is what you're saying?
So that, yeah, the funds are going to be encumbered in September and this would be a year and a half program. And as part of this, we'll be evaluating sustainability and we've already had some conversations around how to do that as we think about our entitlement funding moving forward.
I have a question in the how.
Yes.
In the how was, this is focused, like you said, from K3 and then adult diploma or graduation. I'm thinking of research, again, taking my hat to where I am over there in Winuski as an ML Director, multilingual learner program, dealing with multilingual learners. There's a lot of research out there that proves when someone knows how to read and write in their own language, it's a boost for them to really grasp any other language you expose to them such as English. Would this initiative support heritage language classes where many communities out there that I know can benefit from it and have been advocating for it? Because we had little money and we used that money and that money went away. It was a one-time grant from nearly May. Since we exhausted those funds, we could not provide it. So we are not supporting that piece, that part of the literacy work, and many folks are really advocating for it.
And what specific program did you release funding for?
I heard the quality heritage language class where we held, yeah, I'm going to give you a bigger picture. At Winuski School District, 19 languages are spoken. At Winuski, the 19, I included English in that. Winuski students represent 29 countries, I include the U.S. If we think of K3, a part of those students, most of them would benefit from anything literacy related, for sure. And as we know, research shows when they are taught in their own languages and can read in their own languages, it makes it easier for them and for their parent actually even support them at home. So the way we framed it is classes were open to students and to their parents. So parents themselves even get literate to work with their child and know how we teach English to our students, native Vermonters. Parents adopt the style, take it home. It's very useful. It was very well attended, but we didn't have the means to continue such program. And you can, you can explore it. It's very, it's very effective to support literacy for those who have English as a fifth language. Here's an example. English is my seventh language. It's the seventh language I learned.
Very impressive.
That's me, honestly speaking. Yeah. So at Winuski, we have students whom English is third or maybe second or third.
I appreciate that comment. I would say that that's not explicitly designed within the RFP. There is a part of this that's related to family engagement resources, and I think there may be some opportunity to think through how we might help to, how we might learn from that program and what is successful. But I would venture to guess that what you're describing is, was done at a level of rigor that we may not have the funding within that bucket to support, but certainly would, I'm interested in learning and having conversations as we move forward and learn through this process about what we need to be prioritizing. So thank you for that feedback. I think it's important.
So I'm curious with the October 2024, with the professional learning and coaching opportunities. So those are kind of, if I'm thinking of this correctly, that those are pilot programs that will hopefully then be embedded and you'll be able to go statewide with funding?
Right, with, the intent is for this to be a capacity building approach. And the feedback that we received is the most useful way we could support is really job-embedded, meaning coaches are, you know, in the classroom providing that coaching and support and modeling to really help embed these new practices. But I think we're going to learn a lot through the process. So yes, there will be a lot of targeted intervention, but these broader learning communities where we can bring in some national experts to help, you know, share expertise and guidance will be also very informative as we think about making a larger impact statewide.
Is there any opportunity for the people who receive these, the funding and the learning to then sort of, that they would be the next front that would then go out and sort of train?
Yes. We would love to be able to build in some sort of a short-term credential as part of this work, and that's some conversation we're having as it relates to the Vermont Standards Board around how we might be able to do that so that there is, you know, an incentive and a, incentive for teachers to participate, but also a recognition of their mastery so that they could be supportive of this in being coaches and in helping to build capacity for other teachers. So that is something that we need to work through, but is part of the intention.
Okay. I'm thinking about the iBots.
Yes. Yeah. So we're very excited about this work. The next initiative I wanted to highlight was the State Aid for School Construction Working Group. So that was also a product of the General Assembly from this past session. The charge of this working group is to study and create a recommended plan for a statewide school's construction aid program. They will address a number of topics and I'll walk through some of those here in this next slide. Obviously, this work is very complicated. So we're looking at governance, how to prioritize. I think the working group has acknowledged that they're not sufficient funding for every school, right? And nor may that be needed, but rather how do we prioritize to ensure high return on investment? Thinking about eligibility criteria, what might be the state-based share, incentives for qualifying for funds. There's a number of considerations around kind of the environmental conditions, so that would include PCBs, but other considerations as well. There, I'm just going to kind of run through, looking at different fiscal models. So certainly, as we approach this work, sustainability and everything we do will be important. So there's some conversation around that, along with population considerations, you know, who's being served, how many students benefit from these type of investments. And also thinking kind of broadly around grant opportunities and thinking around renewable energy as we're, that's an important value of our state. So obviously, this is a long list of things to consider. This working group actually is operating under a very short timeframe. So their findings and recommendations will be submitted to the General Assembly on, on or before December 15th of 2024. So again, you can see there's, there's a lot of work streams that are happening right now that are on a very accelerated timeline. And so this will coincide with preliminary recommendations from the Commission on the Future of Public Education. So I did attend, I have a designee that's represented me regularly on this working group, but I attended the first meeting just to express my commitment to ensuring that there is alignment with the Commission. And so I'm staying tightly coordinated with their questions and also recommendations to bring that back to the Commission. Timeline of the work, so just to highlight some of the things that have already occurred, this group met for the first time on July 30th. That was a virtual meeting, really providing more of an overview, outlining their charge as a working group. They did review the 2021 School Facilities Assessment. Many of you may have seen that. If you have not, we can certainly share that, which gives initial projection around the cost and the need for building, repairs, renovations, rebuilds. August 14th, there was another meeting. You can have, I have links, we'll share this presentation out to, so you have more additional information. But this also looked at the relationship to the district quality standards and looking, starting to look at an overview of other state programs. So in this instance, I looked at Rhode Island, and I know there's some considerations for other programs that, that may be viable as we think about this in Vermont. So a couple of recurring themes that we're just calling out here, you know, helps drive statewide priorities, right? I mean, I think that's a really big consideration and a large charge is being thoughtful around these recommendations in the context of the overall need for this state and our future So considerations, considerations for the next meeting, which will be coming up next month, looking at, understanding program resources and estimated funds, being able to quantify this will be important, certainly for the General Assembly to review and consider future recommendations. Looking at funding mechanisms, they are also exploring from a governance perspective the potential of an independent approval board and what program staff might be required. We all always want to learn from best practices, so there is a charge to look at other states and thinking about also what do they do for more, for smaller repairs? And then lastly, you know, what are those economic drivers that need to be factored in with this recommendation to the General Assembly? So as we look forward to and ask or focus really from the state board as we keep you abreast of this work, we'll be looking at funding mechanisms and revenue streams. Of course, looking at applicability of other state programs and how that might fit with Vermont's context. The previous Vermont State Aid Program did require projects to be approved by the state board. And so that working group is considering whether this process would stay the same or if another approval board should be recommended. And so we'll just continue to keep you updated on those conversations as we, as we move forward. So I'll pause there. I think that's the conclusion of my update for School Construction Aid Working Group. Any questions for me?
I think it might be that there had been a previous requirement for a study that I don't think ended up happening that just sort of looked at school consolidation. And I can't remember which statute it appeared in, but it's, and I don't know that it necessarily happened. But I'm wondering if it is part of informing sort of standards and qualifications for funding as we're thinking about sustainability.
Yes. And I know in participating...
I'm wondering if it exists.
Yes. And that's some conversation, too, as we think about governance and we think about how do you measure the return on investment. I do think a lot of this will, have some conversations around regionalization and where it makes sense to invest funding to deliver education.
Thank you. I imagine that that helps conversations happen in a more intentional collaborative manner if it is about improving either a singular building or building new to bring people together rather than the fear that happens when people fear they're losing something. So it's a nice framework.
I will share as part also of our listen and learn as we're really doing some of this pre-work with our education leaders. Part of the focus is looking at facilities. And so what we're trying to be intentional about with the agency's process is creating these feedback loops with all of these different committees through our ongoing planning process. So there is some intentionality as we bring forward these reports in the field that we will include some of the analysis of the facility condition. We'll look at academic data, we'll look at enrollment data, right? And really thinking about that these reports inform, having, having some of these data reports really be comprehensive and informing a number of different decisions, right? So that there's continuity in our understanding of how everything fits together.
Any other questions or comments for Zoe? This was really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank Zoe for taking, I know these presentations take time, but it really is helpful to us to be good partners in the work when we have, I'm looking forward to our parking lots. But I think it helps build a shared understanding around the work. Thanks. Again, I know it's extra work on your part, having done way too many PowerPoint's in my life, but thank you for that.
Yes, I think Suzanne, yes, yes. If we didn't just upload, if we didn't upload it before, it'll be sent out.
Right. It's not uploaded yet, but I'm going to be, I have to accessibility check it first, then I'll upload it to the website.
And it's hyperlink, right?
It will be, as soon as, you've already got the hyperlink to the state board meeting in the meeting invitation. And once I add it in there, that link will work and send you to all the meeting materials, including this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. For all you do, we appreciate it.
But you are doing a lot of work. You've hit the ground running.
I'm really proud of the team. I really feel like we're making some really positive progress and momentum on really strategic and key priorities for the state. And I'm really welcome the opportunity to share that with the state board and continue to get your input. I think that that's really paramount for us to be collaborating well as we move forward.
Thank you. All right. Future meeting planning. I have my list.
Parking lot.
Sorry?
Parking lot.
I'm just going to tell you what's on my, well, this is what is on my list really for next month. But just a reminder that we will be meeting in person for both September and October. And my thought, as I've articulated to at least some of you, is historically, the board has gone to the high school of our graduating senior. So like last year, we went to Aaliyah's school, the year before that, we went to, oh, the, I just lost her name, the hairdresser.
We went to Barry.
Amira.
Thank you, Amira. Thank you. I'm so sorry, I forgot that. But it occurred to me that we also have board members that sort of transition off the board. And in fact, both Kim and Jenna will be transitioning off in February. We have also sort of adopted the practice of meeting in person sometimes and online other times. So my thought was that we would be meeting in person in September and October before we have to start thinking about snow and ice and rain and dark. So one of those meetings I would like to have to honor Kim, I believe you said in Essex. And then the other one would be in St. Johnsbury to honor Jenna. So to be determined which meeting will be in which location, but that's coming up. And also what we have done in the past is instead of starting at 8:30 like we do when we're virtual, I've tended to start the meetings later to allow people travel time. And frankly, I enjoy and think it's really helpful for... And frankly, I enjoy and think it's really helpful for us to get into the schools that we're having our meetings at. So I've arranged, you know, to have a tour of the school and then lunch and then start the meeting at 1:00. So none of those details have been set in stone, but that's, you know, what I'm envisioning.
Is that for both September and October?
Yes. Yeah. So for you guys, that would, well, I mean, St. Johnsbury will be close, but yeah.
Compared to today, that's nothing.
Could we discuss that? I mean, if you start at 1:00, then we're going to go to 4:00 or 5:00, so you're going to drive home in the dark or you're going to have to leave in the dark. And I think people, at least as I get older, which I'm really old.
No.
Yeah, I am. When I look in the mirror, I don't know who it is. I would prefer we start a little earlier so we can leave a little quicker, too. And especially like with our student members, you know, they're going to wind up having sports, I'm sure, and fall sports, just fall programs. So I mean, maybe we could start at like 10:00, do the tour, have a meeting at 11:00, break for lunch, and then finish up, just so we're not there like, I'm really nervous, I got to get going, and then we're going to hit the rubble traffic.
Well, that is kind of what we've done, where we've met at 10:00 for the tour.
Yeah, but, or maybe make it early, because we don't start the Board, we started this one at 1:30, and it's now almost 4:00.
These are long days. I'm open to suggestion, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how do we have a half-day meeting and lunch and a tour of the school? I mean, if you guys want to start at 8:00 and we can all, you know, drive--
Sleep until 5:00 a.m. But-- I can't do that, school drop-off. I'd be missing. So we got sort of a double whammy on, you know, right? For those of us who have kids, like, you know, my window of opportunity is between school drop-off and school pickup, right? So--
Well, you're not going to make this up today, are you?
Yeah, I, yes, I've, I've been rearranging as we go.
Of course, we're hybrid. I mean, the other thought is that we can start earlier, break for lunch in the middle of the meeting and then finish the meeting, but that doesn't seem to be very helpful for members of the public.
It was just conversation. It's not--
Yeah. I mean, I'm open to ideas. This is just kind of the best way that I came up with, to sort of hit the, being accessible to the public and--
I would just suggest probably, even if we had sort of brunchy, like, food available and start at 11:00 or 11:30. I think breaking in the middle of the public meeting differently than having a retreat style and then going on is difficult. And if we needed to follow up on the retreat-style part of this work, maybe we have a special meeting that's virtual. Like, I appreciate that that is, could not have been facilitated with the markers and the colors and the stickies, but there's technology for that. And there are ways to do that remotely, and that might be, you know, squeezing it in a little tighter, but without having to break in the middle of a meeting for the public, that's difficult.
I'm not, like, I'm not, I didn't think that was a good idea.
Yeah. And so, like, it was just a both-and kind of thing, probably, because I think big travel is hard to get anywhere for nine or otherwise, so.
Yeah. And my recollection is that when we'd met in person, we'd started at 10:00 with the tour of the school. I mean, the other thing we could do is flip that and meet first--
Do the tour at the end.
And then do the tour at the end.
But the kids might not be in the school.
Yeah.
It might be a journey.
Yeah. Tricky. Good food for that, speaking of food.
Yeah. So my guess is that it's probably going to stay at 10:00, just given all of the different To be continued. Okay, so I have the following on my list of things. Update on district quality standards and quality assurances. That was a presentation by the Agency that I think had been discussed. Yep. Update on community schools, that was another thing that we had discussed. Quarterly update by the Special Education Advisory Panel, which had been scheduled for this month, but we're going to do September instead. And then vision for special education presentation by the Agency. Possible vote on the health and PE standards. And then parking lot, probably not September, sometime later this fall. How we accredit therapeutic schools and the ISTA update from the Agency.
Was it a vote on the standards? I thought we would be taking in the standards in September.
No, I think it was, I thought we were taking it in today, and then they're submitting a green sheet for September.
Okay. I guess I understood we were going to be talking about the process for standards, so, okay.
I believe the vote was in September.
Okay.
At least the first one.
So that would be the vote, but do you--
Do you feel comfortable with that timeline, or would you rather a month to think through the process?
Well, I thought we were referring these out to committees, to have the committees work through the standards when they came in, and that was going to be the standard process that we use for all standards.
So should we do your discussion of process in September--
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do.
And then hold off on the possible vote on the standards until we settle on the process?
Yeah.
And then just keep in mind, I think that we're going to have to nimble so that we stay on your proposed timeline.
We have a little flexibility.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Only my apologies that I need to leave my own party.
Thank you for hosting.
My next meeting is going that way.
Okay.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for hosting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good facility.
Couple of things from my notes.
So I noticed that Rich's expired appointment, but he was the end of another term, so is that, you'll be, I don't know, reappointed or wanting to be reappointed or--
Send something to the Governor's Office, and I thought it was done, I just--
So back in January, I reached out to Rich, and I said, hey, your term is expiring, because he took over Oliver Olson's term, and I said, your term is expiring, but since you didn't serve a full term, by statute, you are eligible to, you know, reenlist, if you will. And Rich expressed his interest. So then I put him in communication with Kendall from the Governor's Office, and so, you know, as far as I know, you have been reappointed. I think that was the intent.
I just, when you did that, that thing, I was looking at our termination points, I was like, wait a minute, Rich was done in February? Thank God he's been coming still.
Does it say February? Did that not be updated?
It does.
It does say February, so I noticed that, I wanted to point that out.
Oh, you know, it does. I took an old slide.
And then the Ethics Commission training, I know from my other statewide boards that I'm on, we are subject to that, and I think we should give everybody the link to it and we should all do it. It's an online module thing. So I know we haven't talked about it, but I know that we probably should--
So could I delegate to you, because I know you have done it?
Yeah.
Could you send an email out with a link to the ethics training?
Yep.
Maybe to Maureen and Suzanne, and they can forward it onto the Board?
Great, I will do that.
Thank you. No, thank you, that's right.
I will happily do that.
And then, this is something that Boards are now required to do. So Kim pointed out--
And elected officials.
And then the loop and feedback on updates for the Commission and issues coming up for Board input. And in a parking spot for December, I'd love for us to have an informed conversation around things we noticed from the Legislature that came out of an Elkar conversation, like, what are legislative constraints around our rules, or what are the things that we might need to help inform because it's one of our statutory requirements? And that could be a parking lot for the, you know, a few months out anyway. And then if there's anything the students want to do as projects, I would happily volunteer whatever support I can offer to. If there's something that you want support in elevating student voice more broadly, we love hearing about your experiences, but broader student voice is also an opportunity. If you guys have the time and bandwidth for it, let us know how to help you.
I also think we need to put budget on the agenda at some point.
In terms of--
We'll be proposing a budget, so we should probably talk about it as a group, right?
I thought we were submitting something.
Okay, I guess I assumed the whole group would look at whatever we submitted. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, I'm aware of the timing, because I think we have a September deadline.
Oh. I'll put in a plug for us to do that, because I noticed, and I was looking back at 2019, we used to be on the National Association of State Boards of Education. They actually have a free training coming up for student Board members, and I'm happy to send that link. I think it's free even if you're not a member, because we are not a member. We dropped that back in 2019, it was $19,000. There's a lot of resources I noticed at their website, and I think as professional development and support for the work we do to have a broader perspective nationally, I think we would be really benefited by that type of a membership. And with respect to the budget, I just was a little bit worried that we already had legal expenses that--
That got rolled from, I mean, she held off on submitting those because we ran out of money last year.
We're almost out of money already, so.
So this gets back to, you know, this conversation that I've had with the Agency to figure out the process by which we could request additional money for our budget, and then the conversation with Tammy about, you know, building that request. And I think what might make sense, given the timing, is maybe, you know, you and I can work on it, submit it out to the full Board, and if anyone has any questions to respond, because I'd much rather move on this quickly so that we don't lose--
Makes sense.
Does that sound good with everyone else?
But back to your point on the national organization, I also think that as we start to embark on conversations about some responsibilities and how sort of work is delineated between an agency and a State Board, many states do that differently, and having a national organization that can help us profile that and think through other models would probably be helpful. It's what they, you know, they sort of know the nuts and bolts of how states do this, and that could be helpful to us.
Anything else? All right. Seeing no other hands raised.
Public to be heard.
Are there any members in the public who wish to be heard?
None.
None, okay. All right. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll suck at it.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
It appears to be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember to hand your paper.